Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Bob Templeton from Templeton, Nebraska is on his way. As soon as he gets here, I will turn it over to you before so we can start going through our superintendent report right now, and then when he gets here, we will turn it over and then we'll finish that. Yeah, yeah, exactly. Okay, so we'll start with our enrollment report. If you look at our enrollment reports, we typically do go down about this time of the year. And you can see if you look at 1920, we were down a little bit then too. And we're about, we're just kind of staying close, not exactly 100, but plus 200 down, kind of like this year all year. You look at our attendance on the next report. You'll see that our attendance, we're doing, our district attendance is right about 96 even, 96%, which is really good. That's where we want to be. I'm hoping it'll go up maybe just a few percent to point that the big time is going to be really good this year. Because that'll just help us with our funding, but our attendance is holding really well for the year. Next, we've got our A and A report. And you will see again, we're about 100 down from last year, or the year before, actually. If you look at the year before, we had COVID for the end of the year. But we're about 100 down from where we were two years ago at this time. Okay, and next, we've got our town nutrition report, Carrie. If you'll come on up. Okay, this is Carrie Frederick, Carrie is our town nutrition director. And she always comes in and gives a report with all the kids.
Your team has brought the last speaker.
Yes, yeah.
What everyone has.
Our claim for last April was $35,520. And our claim for this April was $322,137. So there was a $286,000 difference. So that's huge. Last April, you won't remember, we were out on the curb. We'd been about $312. $312 a day. So I kind of looked to see where we were as a contribution for meeting our budget. And we're only $3,000 away from reaching our budget this year. So we still have the rest of May, so we'll be in August.
Very good. Any questions? And just looking at the fund balance, it's getting, we're getting there, we're getting there. And so hopefully by December, we will be negative even for the work that we put up.
The budget showed my numbers, and we're now giving our deficit this year. So it will cover that.
Yeah.
I can't say that something called the office department, maybe you have been in a position to do this. Because there's some big districts that are, the public, the partners are being designated.
Especially waiting on several committees that have been used.
Yes. There are a lot of, a lot of decisions that were made along the way.
Thank you, Carrie. Why don't you come on up and Rebecca to do her report, and then we'll get through that. The second question.
Okay, in April, we're at $322,000. And so, of course, this is the time we're starting to do this question to draw, but we are at 97%. Over 97% on our current revenue and over 98% on current earnings. So that is really good. Next is the general fund financial report. And so you can see in that local revenue, almost 92% collections. So that was a reduction on those past collections. And then on our expenses, we expect to be without two service stations overall, or 63% without. Debt service personnel have any activity for the month of April. We made those last commitments in August. There was a question in the financial report of every semester in Tuesday. So you can actually see their cycle program. At the end of April, just about $183,000 overall revenue. As you said, Aprils, easily. In the overall budget, they want to make that deficit there for their overall revenue to be over. And they are, they have an overall excess of over almost $200,000. So just a reminder, we can change their payroll to be in a class. So they can pay a payroll all summer and they won't have to send their pension line. So they'll need that some of that, but they are really good. Very pleased with where they are. And we are expecting that extra cycle revenue also through the current payroll. So that will also be a boost as well. Next is public cell, and they're kind of bugging along this year. They're a little behind for the four last year, but they're still, they still have an excess of over $40,000.
Definitely be able to issue that term.
I'm not sure yet, but we do got a now we have to, one to reconcile for these. And that's when their last A payroll was paid for the school year. And so, so that's really good.
Okay.
Okay, and then the last financial report is the financial monitoring of your four holes. So that aligns each of those functions to your holes.
Okay, and then the next thing here, we did establish the special revenue.
Okay, and so that was, this is our, you know, federal funds statement. It's a very, the same initiative as federal funds. We're still waiting on several knowledge filings that are backordered to kind of finish out those prior to the federal fund. So that's why I think there are more than that you can do. But otherwise, we just have a pretty normal, nondata.
Okay, so now we're on, oh, and yes, one other thing I've asked Metzger to go over. If you'll move, you've got two things in front of you. You've got the Texas school finance update, and then beneath that, you've got a letter. On our letter pad, if you'll pull those two up, and I'm going to have Metzger explain to you what this is.
Okay, so this first one, I think that looks like that. This is an email that I received by M7 from the渣渣. And so this was an update on the community substitute for House Bill 2025. House Bill 2025 was the House Bill 302 bill that is going to be, to clean up House Bill 30. And so the House, the House put that together, passed that, it's over to the Senate, and we can add a few things that we want to prepare. So specifically, if you look kind of toward the old picture, it says Section 25. I would just call this paragraph. And basically, this would authorize the commissioner to adjust our state funding, sort of five of the main separate funding that we require from the state. So basically, giving the commissioner authorization to change the state funding we have to do this in order to meet those requirements at the state level. And then additionally to that, it says, beginning with the '21, '22 school year, the bill will require each school district to reserve an agency determined amount of state funding. And so essentially, this is how they're going to supply our state bodies. So by requiring us to withhold our own money. It's outside, right? And so it says, an agency determined amount right now. We listened to a Q and A question about that this morning, for a reason to be a 40%. Of course, we will determine that, but that would be over $200,000. So in responding to that, TACO, it will nail, put together some talking points for us to discuss with our senators and our legislators. And so we put together this letter, which is what we have there. It has, if we, yes, we've got this officer, this, and so we're going to ask you all to sign it. So I'm going to make additional points as to how this needs to be done.
So if you'll just take a few minutes to read over that. I'm going to have one copy to come on, three D. I went to possession this, and we'll give that email to every one of our state senators. We've got, you know, a breakfast program. But this, I mean, this is a positive point because of the block. And, you know, the kids that do need blocks of interventions this year just because of last spring not being in school. All of the extra expenses that we've had to encounter. So I'm going to give you three minutes to just read through that. If you agree with it, I'm going to bring it down to Myra and give a pen and.
Do you want a report?
I don't.
So they have five hundred boards. First, we have, now.
It's the point of standing with the legislature member, and any of these guys go through, that would be 2.5.
Two boards are making, a step back. There's a plan they sent us on board. They keep following plan or setting up.
And we have no common sense to know where our money needs to go.
I also sent a copy of this letter to the other secretary of the public that they wanted to modify it and sign it so that, you know, it could be sent in as well. I know that some of them will be. You're welcome. Thank you. This great, and this Metzger brought it to our attention quickly. And because they could be voting as early as tomorrow morning.
So it's a, a past this holiday, it's one of those two, a committee, a joint committee made up of senators and town representatives to reconcile the differences between the House and the Senate bills. And so in the past holidays, there's still a chance that this can get put out through that committee. So that's really, for this, this past section to get required.
Any questions on that? Okay, so we will, thank you, Ms. Metzger. We wanted to get this in, so Rebecca, if you will get that from Mr. Loef whenever it gets to him and sign it, then you'll have that.
Yes.
And we will, we will have to our part to make sure that they here are going to be there. Okay? Okay, the next part, the next report we have is our police department report. You've got the items there, and then Mr. Peterson was just going to talk to one thing, and Mr. Captain Redding.
Within that building, and it talks about the officers, first reporting officer made aware of a unusual police situation. Will first inform the media. Shelter and place situations where it's just referring to kind of the chain of command and making sure that the chief police, or the captain, or superintendent, or the chief administrative service officer will order securely these secure measures unless the officer is at that campus location and involved in an active unusual threat situation. So those would just be added pieces to that, or policies and procedures to that part of the rule.
Any questions? Okay, thank you. Next, we have our calendar of events. So I just want to kind of mark, kind of point out a few key cues. The first one is, we've got lots of things. We've got some of our end of things here. We've got our middle school soccer activities going on. We've got the choir and things that are listed there with those protocols that you guys did approve at the last meeting. They're after hours. The next one is May 21st, this Friday, is the Blue and White Spring Football Game. If you would like to help serve, if you, if you could be there by 5:45 at the stadium. And the government shirt is wearing.
We're going to wear the blue and white shirt.
The white shirt, okay. And if you, okay, well, maybe you have another one, okay?
Oh, you just make sure you and G, while your jaws out there.
I'm from my water, but you never, this thing.
You did not get a thing out of me.
Somebody had to say it.
I had it, Friday at 5:45 at the stadium, okay? And then the next thing I want to draw your attention to is May 26th, 9:00 to 10:30, the senior parade where the kids are going, you know, we did this last year because they couldn't do the walk at the elementary schools. And so we've got that, that morning for High School and New Horizon. We've got this on there. And then May 28th, we've got the senior breakfast in the morning for Joshua High School. Graduation is at 8:00 PM. So I need you guys to be there at 7:30. I need you to park on the visitor's side, okay? And that's going to be May 28th. And Emily will send a reminder to you guys. But the visitor's side, there's going to be parking spots for you. You're going to park on the south side of the, so the side closest to Plum Creek, that visitor parking lot. And there'll be cones up in the front for you guys to park in, okay? And then we'll meet there like we do, and then we'll walk to the other side for graduation. Yes, that includes. And then on June 1st. I already, I told them to make sure that she knows, yeah, so hopefully, yeah. We'll give them, make sure she has the names of our board members. And then June 1st is New Horizon. Graduation is going to be in the stadium. But this, you're going to park on the visitor's side. So you're going to park on the north parking lot, like when you're going to football game where to park. There'll also be cones for you there to park. I'm going to ask you to be there at 7:30, oh, no, I'm sorry, it starts at 7:30. I'm going to ask you to be there at 7:00. So for Tuesday night, June 1st, if you'll be there at 7:00. But we're going to be on the home side, oh, for New Horizon. So you know where you park for football? And there'll be cones for you for your parking lot, okay? You're welcome. Okay, and then you've got June 1st, you've taken our last, you've taken our last day of school. And then June 5th, I just wanted to let you know, we've got that listed. We are going to do a second kindergarten roundup. We had great participation, so did a great job of communicating that out. But our numbers are really high, and we may need to, this may indicate some additions, additional kindergarten teachers that we may need. So we want to do this early so we can get good teachers. So it is on a Saturday, and so that might also be a help for school families because it's not during the day, it's on a Saturday. So we're going to do that, and I wanted to just let you know that, you know, the Osberger for teens, they try to gather and put that together.
Every Saturday, several resources for their.
There we go. Any questions? Okay, so then our spring athletic sport court, our coaches will be here to present that to us when we go into our regular meeting. Our ROTC sport court, Lieutenant Colonel will be here to present that to us in the regular meeting. The bullying harassment report will be presented in the regular meeting by Mr. Peterson. And extracurricular reading book, will you go ahead and present that now? And these are our changes and updates. Mr. Peterson has been working with all of our sponsors and with Coach Dorman on this.
Yeah, it's pretty thick. There's a lot of, a lot of new, I guess, added expectations regarding.
There's a lot of new, I guess, added expectations regarding with our extracurricular programs. And anything blue is added text, and obviously the red is taken out by the fine text. So we wanted to make sure, you know, whenever, I guess, on page seven, it talks about extracurricular, quitting procedures and making sure that there's, you know, that we are making sure those students are communicating, are bringing information with their parents, so the parents are aware that they're quitting and that. So one of the first things students have to do is just provide that note, letting them, letting that coach or that sponsor know that they're wanting to quit because their parents are aware of them quitting. So we just want to put a little bit more responsibility on those players, whether they just walk in and out or those programs. And it just talks about about the two week grace period, beginning of that sport. That's very similar to what was in the past. Looking over to page nine, there's extracurricular conflicts, very similar. The added pieces, if a solution can't be found, then the athletic director may make a decision based on the following criteria. That's relative importance of each camp. So this will be a situation where again, he comes up with another extracurricular event. We've got to work together to find a solution, whether it's a district competition or whether it's just a game or a meeting. And that way they can work through those situations, come to the best solution. And that way it takes, you know, we try to take the burden off that child and figure it out as adults. Kind of going forward, you'll see we've added some more stuff on page 11 to the student side ISS. Students signed to ISS will be required, they're, will be required, with the student code fund, that they're required to commit to some makeup work along with that. So we've got in there, the ISS ends at 4:00 P. M. at the end of that day. They're required to still show up to practice that way they're not just going home or board to that. Any type of extracurricular practice is required to show up. If they do miss, then, you know, we've got some extracurricular makeup work that they'll be responsible for completing before they did that. It's just like any other class, they work this end of day and they would have their makeup work completed. Very, very few. I mean, you're not going to have a lot. We've got a lot of great kids here that do things right, and so you don't have to worry about that. But you do have occasional stuff that you need to be reminded, and that happens, you know, that's all over the state of Texas. Nation for that matter, so. But ultimately, as far as the handbook goes, it, there's, you just kind of go through each. Athletics kind of changed theirs up a little bit. They added a lot more expectations as far as it was, there wasn't many expectations required of the student, the expectation of coach, and even the expectation of parents. They want to make sure that that communication line is open and available at all times with those parents. So just added those pieces. And then he said one of the other additions that they added to that in the attendance was the, just if there's a, if there's a problem, just follow that change of plan, knowing who to go to, start with the coach, and then working through and following those steps under that parent-coach guideline. So those were some new additions. As far as if you get into any others, or get into bands, there, it was really more of just rewording. There wasn't any changes as far as there's actually a program and how things work. Same thing goes for choir, and I don't believe anything changed much regarding the cheer or even drill team for that matter. So there was a few. There was one piece that they both agreed upon, and that was just in regards to eligibility. And that could be on page 48. So if they're not passing at that class or kind of grade check, they'll be placed in a faculty tutorial in a way they can bring the grades up, but the sponsor works with the job, bring the grades up. Once a grades are passed, then they're released.
That team, Mr. Peterson, once school's out, he'll get that posted on our website. Okay? Thank you. So the next part, the next tab in our workshop information, our student report is the graduation information for high school. It gives you the date, also shows you what our makeup dates are if we were to have to make up. It gives you that sample right there. But again, for for high school on May 28th, it starts at 8:00. You need to be there at 7:30 on the visitor's side parking. Then you've got New Horizon, which is Tuesday, June 1st. 7:00 on the home side parking. Any questions?
I haven't got much love. I think I have a bachelor.
No, and we can't sponsor bachelor. So it's if our churches put that together and then just our students, actually, our students can put that together, so. Okay, so let me go real quick, and then I'll get, if you can give me just a few more seconds, okay? So then we'll have our high school presentation and then we'll get our recognition. So we'll get Mr. Templeton on, and then we'll go through our agenda items. Okay, Bob, are you there?
Yes, I am. I do apologize. I am, I totally my fault. I do remember us talking about meeting a person that I saw the Zoom invite on my calendar and thought that the meeting must have switched to Zoom, but do accept my apologies.
Okay, no problem. Let's, we'll go ahead. We've got our copies in front of us, and then we will go for now. So I'm going to turn it over to you, Bob.
Hey Rebecca, can you make me the host so that I can share my screen? On the participants, there should be the ability to mic be a host.
Okay, that should be done.
Okay, very good. All right, you should be able to see my screen now?
We see it.
Okay, great. Well, we'll start just by touching on the economic impacts that we're seeing so far, and that's through the end of the year. Of course, the unemployment rates have have improved significantly. You'll notice back in March of 2020, when we started the pandemic, the unemployment rate shot up to almost 13%. And over the last year, so we have seen a steady improvement. In fact, it dropped very significantly last summer. And during the most of the past year, 2021 portion of the year, unemployment rate has bounced between 6.3% to 8%. We do expect the unemployment rate to continue to improve as we open up more businesses, leisure, hospitality, the travel industry is seeing some improvements, and we are hoping that this summer will be significantly better than what it was last summer. Of course, we've got about 35, 36% of the adult population has had the vaccine. The vaccine is rolling out at a very healthy rate across Texas. And so I suspect that when we get to start this school year next year, that the vaccine numbers are going to be high enough that we'll see businesses continue to benefit from that. Now, the housing market continues to be a real outlier, and we're seeing this incredible growth in the housing market. You'll notice from this slide that total home sales, that includes existing home sales and new home sales, are record breaking numbers. And total home sales for 2020, up over 900, and we've seen a new home portion of the home sales up to over 260. Back to the start rate for Joshua is up over 300 is the annual start rate that we're anticipating by the next, about the start of the next school year. We have an incredible straight surge in new housing activity. Now, the prices are continuing to go up, so this is a little bit of a concern. Average price for a new home in Joshua ISD is up over $343,000. The average price for an existing home is $275,000. And one thing that the pandemic did do to the housing market, we have seen a shortage of supply of existing homes for sale. So during the pandemic, many homeowners of existing homes were hesitant to put their homes on the market because they didn't want to have traffic through their homes during that pandemic. So that created a shortage which has added the activity to new homes. So new homes have been a benefit of this shortage of supply of existing homes. So we are seeing a real surge in new housing across Texas. Now, the only challenge is the price is going up, and part of that is due to material costs, bumper, that very high cost right now. Also, the shortage of labor in the steel trades, also causing a prolific increase in the cost of housing. Now, we track it every quarter. Can see in 2020, the second quarter and the fourth quarter were very strong. And we just got the first quarter numbers for your district. You have 111 new home starts in the first quarter of 2021. So highest number by far to home starts that we've seen in the district. And here's your elementary attendance zones. These red elementary zones have started and closed. They close at more than 60 homes per year, plus the annual rate. The orange are closing between 31 and 60. Yellow between 10 and 30. I've mapped your top 10 most active based on annual closings. Bluebird. Lots, so Bluebird Meadows is going to drop down the list. Rustic Meadows, they're going to stay in the top two or three. The Parks and Paints Shop Farms also really just getting started. So they've had a very good start for their new homes. Wildwood Edition 28, Mountain Valley Lake 26. Can see the top 10 are building about 226 of your homes across the district. Now, this next slide is where the vacant developed lots are. Heritage, brand new development down here is the Staples Elementary Zone. It's just getting started. They've delivered 87 lots. They actually have new homes that are already under construction. Mountain Valley Lake has the highest amount of, a second highest amount of vacant developed lots, the 70. In the top 10, we've got about 340 vacant developed lots. So this is going to be where we're going to see the most new home activity during the next school year. So Heritage and Mountain Valley, Rustic Meadows, the Parks and Paints Shop Farms and Oak Hills. That's where we'll see the biggest concentration based on the vacant developed lots. Now, the future lots, here's your top 10. Chisholm Summit, it's still out there. It's still a future that's probably going to be a couple of years before we see the activity in Chisholm Summit. Almost 1,000 future lots. Of course, the Parks and Paints Shop Farms has 561. In the top 10 that we mapped out, we've got 2,552 futures in these 10 subdivisions. So we know that you have the lots and the future lots to maintain about a 250 to 300 homes per year pace for the foreseeable future. Now, this is just splitting out that single family construction by your elementary zones. You can see in North Joshua, they're building the most new homes at 107 annual starts. Second most active is Staples. They had 29 starts, so they may move up into your top spot with the addition of some of these new developments. Caddo Grove, 77 annual starts. You can see there's basically three elementary zones that are building the highest number of new homes. It's the North Joshua, Staples, and Caddo Grove. Some of the details, looking at the big picture, we've got 22 actively building subdivisions. There's 2,800 that are futures, 2,000, 2,800 future lots. We've got about 380 lots available to build on. There is groundwork underway on 420 futures. And that's indicated by these red outlines. These red outlines are where we are seeing development activity. Bulldozers, new lots are coming to where we see the red outlines. Some of the highlights, Joshua Meadows, it's in the Plum Creek Elementary Zone. 327 lots, 60 futures. There are three homes under construction. They're building about 20 to 25 homes per year in Joshua Meadows. That price point starts at 370,000 and goes up to 430,000. Rustic Meadows, right now it's your most active. They've got 134 total lots, 43 vacant developed lots. There were 25 homes under construction when we did the research. They've started 52 homes in the last 12 months. Building about 40 to 50 homes per year. They'll be finished during this next six to eight months, they'll be built out. The Parks and Paints Shop Farms, it's large just right now. It's active, 659 total lots, 30 occupied homes, this is really just getting started. They've got 38 vacant developed lots, but they're also about to deliver their next phase. So they will be delivering additional lots this spring. We estimate that, you know, they're going to be building about 60 to 80 homes per year in this, the Parks and Paints Shop Farms. There is a multi-family piece. We still don't have any developments news on that multi-family piece, so we'll just keep watching that. You have building about 40 to 60 homes per year. Price point starts at 270 and goes up to about 420. Bluebird Meadows, 212 home lots. They had 21 homes under construction. They've started 74 homes in the last 12 months. They've closed 50, so they're having great success. Bluebird Meadows, that price point starts at 245 and goes up to 330,000. And here's the Heritage too, and it's just delivered 87 lots. They're just getting started. We know from our first quarter results that they've started 16 new homes. So there will be families that will be moving in Heritage too this summer and next fall. Mockingbird Hills is also, you know, off to, the groundwork is underway. They're paving all 197 lots will likely be delivered either this summer, late fall for Mockingbird Hills. Any questions on the housing data before I go on to the transfers? Very good activity. You know, it's consistent with what we're seeing across the DMW Metroplex. You know, the DMW Metroplex probably doing very well in terms of job growth and the job situation in the DMW region. We're also seeing, you know, expansion down the Chisholm Trail Toll Road. So the toll road is, you know, kind of helping to drive traffic down into this part of the DMW Metroplex. So we're seeing all along the Chisholm Toll Roads, you know, pretty strong growth activity, you know, even all the way down to Cleaver. And I wanted to touch on the transfer data. So this is from the TEA's database. And so it's the top part of this table is showing the students that are transferring into the district. And this past October, we have 293 students that are transferring. Yeah, you can see that's an increase of about 33 from last year, and the five-year increase is about 26. So we have seen an increase in transfers again. And the bottom part of this table is the transfers out. So these are students that do live or families that live in the district. It's several, but that increased the transfers out as well. So last year, October 19th, that number was 300. This year was 346. So overall, pretty consistent with what we've seen over the last several years between the transfers again and the transfers out. And just to give you some comparisons, opposed to the districts that we've worked with, the DMW area having much, much larger transfer. having much, much larger transfer out number than transfer in. You can see the difference between your transfers in and transfers out is about 50 kids. Whereas Mansfield, some of the larger districts to the north of you, that number would be off by 1,000 to 1,500 more that are transferring out, that are transferring in. The main reason that that's happening is those other districts, says the charter schools, expansion. So we are tracking a charter school that is going to open in the fall of 2022. And it's actually in the Berlison School District. And I don't think that it's going to have a significant impact for Joshua, but it is going to be just the, the, the north of you and it's physically located in Berlison ISD. And here's a look at the enrollment projections. And, you know, you'll notice that this year's fall enrollment was down about 158 kids. The biggest drop was in pre-K kindergarten. Those were your largest two grades that have the biggest decline. That's consistent with what we've seen all across the state of Texas. And it was that COVID concern. Many of those younger families, especially the pre-K kindergarten kids are simply just not engaged in educational learning. So we do expect that there's going to be a pretty significant bounce. I suspect you've seen a little bit of that at your elementary campuses this spring. So part of that 269 of growth is that COVID return from this year at those younger grade levels. You'll notice in the pre-K, we've basically brought the pre-K numbers back to where they were last year. So it's going to be at about 180. We've also brought back up the kindergarten numbers to match up with your birth rate ratio. So we do expect the kindergarten number to be well over 400. So next year's growth, about 4.9%, which was, which year enrollment at 5,731. Now, going forward, beyond the 2021 year, you'll notice that we've got you growing at that 2%, 2.5%. Basically, that's assuming that you're going to be building close to 300 single-family homes per year. So that's what we're seeing in the housing market right now. So as long as the housing market stays at that 300 pace, then we do expect you'll be growing at that 2%, 2.5% rate for the foreseeable future. Now, we monitor the housing market every quarter. And if we see any signs that the housing market is slowing down or changing, we will immediately notify Fran and let you guys know that there may need to be an adjustment. But right now, what we're seeing is about 302 homes per year for the foreseeable future. And here's what it looks like at the campus level. So the elementary campuses, you'll see about almost 190 students have grown at the elementary campuses next year. You can see we've got a couple of years before you get close to capacity. It's definitely, you know, North Joshua could get to over 700 students in 2023. By 2024, you get 749. And your middle schools, it's Nichols Middle School. In about five to six years, it could be approaching capacity. You're in good shape at your ninth grade center and at your high school. So we don't see any, you know, capacity concerns there for the foreseeable future. But it's the elementary that we want to watch the closest to see how those startup school, all your numbers come in for your elementary campuses. I'll summarize and be ready to answer some questions. Joshua ISD has 22 actively building subdivisions. There's approximately 2,800 lots that are in 14 future subdivisions that are in various planning stages. The district has approximately 380 vacant developed lots available for builders to build on. There's groundwork underway on 420 lots, which should be delivered this spring and this summer. Since 2015, 16, transfers in Joshua have increased by about 10%. And the transfers out of Joshua have also increased about 70%. Joshua ISD will enroll more than 6,200 students in five years for the 2025, 26 school year and more than 7,000 students by the 2030, 31 school year. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do you have any questions? And we have set, and Bob, we're going, we've already set our October date, correct? Or we're going to get it set up in early October time so that we can look at those numbers early based on, that'll give us a little bit of time to...
I'm glad that you might want to repeat what she says.
She said, "Do you have the dates?" I don't know if we've gotten it to Angie. Have you gotten them? Okay. We'll get with Angie on that. We're going to set it up in early October. We're going to set it up at the fall review in early October.
Okay.
Like our normal board meeting or another...
For him to get up here. So that will allow us to look at those numbers early to just see what that enrollment is. Like he talked about that COVID return, you know, and when or some of that. Okay? I don't, do, any questions?
Any questions?
Okay. Bob, thank you very much.
Thanks very much.
He needs a different one.
Thank you so much.
I apologize. Please, it's been my apologies.
You're fine. You are fine.
My bad.
You're good.
You're fine. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And I'll be with you for, for October, okay?
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Okay. So we're going to now go into reviewing our agenda items. We're going to go through those with you. If you will go to the first subject A is our previous agenda items. And we've got, so that you've got the minutes from the previous board meeting. We do not have any budgetary minutes for these ones. We do not have any accounts payable. And you had a $50,000, a, a, a purchase number over $50,000 in there for the, um, to resurface, do some surfacing on the last one that was retracted. But we are able to do that, do some patching on that, and that will be under 50. So that one has been voided, correct?
Yes, I, um, yes. Yes, the PO, it's no longer there.
Okay. So you will just be a free minute from previous to me. Subject B, consider student insurance proposal. Would you, Ms. Cooper, would you just like to explain to them what we've done for those reports? So every year, we bring to you the quote for our student insurance. We have to do this annually. And Ms. Cooper and Mr. Higerson have worked on that and we'll just kind of go over that with you.
So I reached out to several different insurance companies, research clients into some of the district's state taxes. The ISD was one. I could not give some quotes back from those companies, but what for, or the mind to... Texas Kids versus used typically, they gave us their quote. I reached out to Liberty Mutual. The base was last year, the district was, I can't take that quote, but I understand the client. So obviously, our, our current one.
And it looks, it's the same time, whether it's...
Yes, they were, they were the last year's, and they think... Yes, they cost everything they're paying for.
So when we get into the board meeting, we'll run in any question. Okay. Thank you very much. Next, our subject C is going to be to upgrade our schedule calendar procedures for the 2022 school year. I think all the programs put that together. They're only things that are changing our dates, correct? So all the procedures are the same as we've used, that we followed this year for our schedule calendar and student insurance, same as adjusting the dates for the calendar. Any questions for that? If you need to add anything. Okay. Subject D is going to be a resolution of the board regarding hazardous traffic, traffic condition. So what, and what do you stop looking for, okay? Every year, we bring this to you. So we are not required to pick up or drop off students within, if they live within two miles of a, of a street, okay? However, we do that, is we, we pick it, we pick up and we deliver kids in, in a mile. But we still are able to receive funding from the state if we identify some hazardous routes. So that might be if I live on 1902, my house is on 1902. I live within two miles of Catawba Elementary. That's saying that they're going to pay if, like, if we did not automatically offer that, they would pay us to offer that route so those kids are not having to walk on 1902. So that would be considered a hazardous route, okay? So what we do is we have, what, Tanya Brooks, who is the director for, for student press, and she identifies those hazardous routes. But you guys as a board have to approve that resolution. And so you've got the identified hazardous routes down the first page. Elder Elementary, it's Route 24. And you can see it's on Old Road 917, Route 20 on, on Market Road 917. Cattle Grove, Route 26, it's on FM 1902. North Joshua, that's Route 2. It's Route 174, that would be the pit across the road, it's 80 miles. Route 21, across 174, Route 24, across 174. On Creek Elementary, Route 11, picks up students in the neighborhood with no sidewalks or crosswalk. Route 17 is 17, picks up students in the neighborhood with no sidewalks or crosswalk. Laughlin Middle School, Route 19, picks up on FM 1902. Route 27, picks up on FM 917. Route 26, picks up on FM 1902. And then at Nichols Mills School, it picks up on FM 731. So less of hazardous towns that have been identified. We do receive additional funding for that. We, you guys can approve the resolution, it's on the next page. And that's what you're going to next to do tonight. And then, Ms. Higerson, take care, make sure that's been in the menu of that statement here. Any questions?
I'm curious, um, we've got Bluebird Meadows, that's like, it's...
Well...
That's where across the, 1902.
It's the route that it's, uh, Cattle Grove, picks up on FM 1902. And Route 26 might be that route, okay, they're crossing here. And, but there is a cross, did we not get a crosswalk out there? Maybe not, I don't know. There's no crosswalk out there, it's on from 731. But, okay, but it could be that route, I'm not sure. Any other question? Okay, the next one. There's a lot of things that may need to be carried over to you. Uh, this is another recurring, this, this is our second, only our second time to do this because this was in the last legislative session where everyone, including our board members, have to go through cybersecurity training. And we also have to certify that everyone has received the training, including our school board members. And so it just says, Passville 3834. It requires all local government employees to complete cybersecurity training each year. The training must be a certified training program and is due to the Department of Information Resources, Texas DIR, for local governments annually on June 14. Each year, the district's superintendent, along with the president of the local school board of trustees, certify the following, that all district employees who access to a district computer system or database have completed the cybersecurity awareness training from NOV4 or DIR. And this year, we've used NOV4 for the last few years, but this next year, we have to take it to the DIR. But anyway, our board members have done it. So when you approve this, you are certifying it. And as Offburger goes through, she makes sure that everyone has done this. And so we are giving you that information and give you that it's been done. And we just need you guys to certify it, okay? Next, we've got subject F, consider Joshua ISD FFAC local policy revisions and Narcan for centers for administration of opioid antagonist medication. I'm going to ask Mr. Higerson to turn up and explain this for you.
This is, uh, at our last meeting, I made a comment about this, but we have worked with the Rees Council and we've had our officers trained with the Rees Council to administer opioid or Narcan in case of an overdose situation. And so our officers are trained and then our, our ambassadors will be trained as well in regards to administering that. And all you would do, you would put, put the policy to our outright game for their approval and then submit to you guys, you would be approving this piece right here where the district shall purchase and store opioid antagonist medications such as Naxlan, this person. Who may, maybe, maybe experienced an opioid related overdose. It just elaborates a little bit more and procedures will develop, working in the chain in regards to administration of opioid medication.
Any questions?
No, but HGO just started at the crown of the century about methanol addictions. And it is pretty interesting, I've only watched one of them. Well, it doesn't shock me to get far out of the...
Any question, any other comments or question? Okay. Thank you. Someone needs you to come on up and we'll explain the others in the regular meeting. The next one is, subject G is to consider the resolution extending our departmental contract for funds, for funds that are given to school districts.
Yes, our contract with the bank first time, okay? And August 31st. And so those are always two-year contracts. And we are allowed three-year extension. But this is our last two-year extension that we're allowed under our original contract. And the bank this time has just one small change to the contract that they're requesting, which we have here. It's the first bullet point on their letter. And they're just requesting that the maximum rate, interest rate that we run be lowered from 2% to 1.7%. So if we actually get 1.7%, I might think that would... I'll, I'll see that being an issue. And then otherwise, all the others are the same thing. And so we are now working with Austin Elster, who was a former JIS student. And so we've kind of made that relationship. And, and we're working well with Austin and with Ms. Stilke. And so we have good relationships with them now. Ms. Mary, can I let down the net with Austin about this renewal? And we...
Okay, great. Let's get into some of it. I asked, so we've got a few revisions that we want to present to you from the compensation plan.
Yes, so this is going to be in the 2020, 2021 compensation plan.
This year's...
This year's compensation plan, we'll write that one for next year. This is to add D and DAP on added pay grade 3. Now, we'll say this is not an adding position, it's just a reclassification. It's currently a decision as a 270-day teacher. So we add a lot of cost on that position to the D and DAP or you know how you do that position, um, build for the summer. Coordinator of Student Learning Outcomes and Federal Special Program, pay grade 4, occupational therapist assistant on medical pay grade 8. We have that position now and they're just out there, they're not on our plan anywhere. And so we needed to rectify that since that's a two-year basis. Food service substitutes, we've been having food service substitutes around here and they're not on our compensation plan, so we'll want to put them on there as well. For our summer camp, Club Excel instructors. Since we're doing the summer camp this summer, we're going to pay them $10 per hour for these instructors. And there'll be a need, because that need will be $10 an hour. And then a change to remove the testing coordinator supplement. That goes with the, the reclassification that we're taking. Since that position will be a administrator, this is on...
Okay. Our next one is to consider regulations to call it, why don't you go ahead and just...
So this is a minor change that I, we did, I did it before, I checked with Has Been, this change has to be made. There is, I hold that, it says four, that is a typo. And it's been there for several years, but when reading it, it misses, misses. So what this policy does is every year, we... So what this policy does is, uh, every year, we allocate five space, five personal days. But, um, if they, if they have, uh, if they're at 30 days, they don't use their sick, and we allocate them five or more days, then this policy states that they do not receive more than the 30 days, so we pay them for those five days. Um, and so when we read this, the or there is a typo, and so we need to bring this to you to have that organized.
Any questions? Okay, next, we have subject J, Consider Letter of Agreement with DITNIS to Provide Adult Education and Literacy Programs for Joshua ISD. This agreement is every three years, this is where we do the adult education. So we'll use the EFL classes. What this is, is a grant from CBA, the base elected school district who's going to oversee it for several school districts in a regional area. DITNIS happens to be that school district that is chosen as the overseer of that. And, but we have to agree with this, so that if there's a need for, let's say, adult EFL classes, or it might be, uh, maybe it's nutrition classes, adult type of education, but we provide the location. So maybe they'll use our high school, um, lecture hall, or maybe they'll use Catawba Road's library. But we agree with them, they can, or can use our facilities. So this is every three years, and so in that time, again, for us to renew that. Any questions? Okay, uh, the next one, Blay, yes, this utility easement, this is from United Co-op. They reached out to Blake several weeks ago, asking for a utility easement. I'll let him explain it, but what it is for is they're wanting to offer, um, internet, free internet to all of their customers, and so what they need to lay by.
So on the, uh, fifth stadium, for industry.
Sorry, it's not for you, that's not for you. They're operating, operating.
They, they were running the fiber line, uh, down it, so they're going to pour it the whole way. They'll dig a couple bridges and pour it, so it'll be four feet deep. So we aren't wanting to do anything, park on our, that's going to be our way. And it'll be very minimal damage, just a, just a ground moving, or. And they're going to go three foot off the curb, so they won't park the train, and so they're, they're taking them to account. And they're, they normally do a 30-foot easement, but they're going to reduce down to 10-foot easement. So they said all they needed, they should never have to see a vacuum there, too. Don't see any issue with that.
And you've got the map, so it shows you, and it's going to be, if you look at the map, um, that little circle kind of drive right there, that's in front of the stadium. So this is going to where that is, like to the left of that, you see? So that's going to be where Henderson goes down the side of the stadium, and then where Henderson turns right, goes behind the stadium, all the way to Stadium Drive. So it's going to follow through that L today, because there that may be.
Well, Augberger has been following across the east side.
Well, yes, they'll be on the east side, and they're going to turn the corner and go to the west. They're going on that north side.
Coming back up.
Yes, they're going down there as well, all the way to the south side.
Oh, so they don't go right, they don't, okay.
Yeah, it's, it's the way you draw, you're drawing on there, it's kind of hard to see if you guys think it's appropriate.
Our side, they make up that way, city route, like, basically.
Well, and I, we talked to the city as well, I talked to Mike Peacock, and he said, as long as it's not under the street, the city's good with it, but outside the curb, it's not.
I mean, that's very, it's not like, right. Where, where, across.
Right.
Yeah, and, and outside.
Any other question? Any concerns?
As good as they've been to us.
Yeah. Very good.
Pretty good.
I'm sorry. Well, I guess I've been with. Because they do a lot, and they always, uh, walking construction, they give, you know, yeah. Do some things that like, we said, oh, so, like, they can't ever see here. They put those, uh, flyers up at the top of our jumper phone, their costs. And there's a lot of costs that we live that we needed to do that. So they, they do that for, and in fact, I think they did it twice this year. Because our flash were looking pretty shabby, and so that can't be a vital issue to leave that for, which saves us a lot of money. Subject L, Consider Resolution of the Board Regarding ESTR3 and Public CB Local State and Federal Revenue Sources. So what this is, is that this really just came up last week, we received it after we got Monday. Um, and with these ESTR3 funds, we talked to you about some of those funding, those coronavirus relief funds that we're receiving, but they may set back a little promise. But anyway, uh, we've got to show, and if you know, every year, we come to you, those people that have been on the board, we have to come to you and tell you how are we, what are our plans for our federal fund? How are we going to spend those plan for all of those federal fights? We always do that in a public hearing in June, and we have plans to do that again. But what they're telling us now, for auditing purposes, we have to live in a policy that, so that we can, we can assure consistency. We consistently do that, we have to do number 10 years that way. But they're telling districts they're going to need to do that. So in this resolution, if you look at that resolution, and you look at the first bullet down there after the fourth or fifth paragraph, the district shall provide public notice of federal grant applications during information item at a board meeting and by publishing information on the district's website. The district shall make available opportunities for public input as required by law or the grant granting agency. The way that we're going to provide public notice is going to be through a public hearing, and that also allows parent people to ask questions, comment through a public hearing to do that. But also, as Augberger's been working with, so, and there's going to be a survey that will also go out to parents, staff, and high school students on ways to use these funds as well. Uh, and then the next thing is just approval required, grant and award plan shall be, for example, this could be the board of the superintendent. You already have that policy that can give you that approval, that's already been global, that can give you the approval. So basically, what we approve, you have to send them in, I approved it, they send it to me, I stand it, and they go there. Okay, so this is what we have to do, and they sent it to us last week, we need to do it now, because next month, we're bringing our public. And yeah, the next one we continue to work. Okay.
Those are workshop.
And just so you'll see, I tried to ask, we've got this list of upcoming calendar events, and we put together. My father, we thank you for bringing us here tonight, and we just want to give you the glory and thank you for helping us to make it through this year. With all of the unknowns that we face, we want to pray for those staff members, those students, those families who lost loved ones this year, just please continue to give them the strength and comfort, um, that they need. And just again, thank you for providing us with, um, safety protection throughout this year and guidance as we've made it through. Continue to watch over our students, continue to watch over our staff and our families. Please let everyone have a safe and healthy summer. We ask that you just bring everyone back, ready to start a new year, um, in a normal fashion. Please again, also provide us with the wisdom needed so that we can make those decisions that are necessary and right for our students as we move forward in this district and move forward tonight in our, in your name we pray, amen. Yes, when I call your name, if you'll come up, we're going to start with Mr. Devin Connolly. And Devin, Devin is the son of Chris and Michelle Connolly. He is an 11th grader at Joshua High School. Um, Devin's hobbies and interests are basketball, soccer, puzzles, horn haul, ping pong, and fishing. Devin is very involved in student council and will be the secretary again next year. He is a great kid with a servant leadership heart. No wonder he was voted kindest male student at JHMS. And we are so proud of our most kindest students. But Devin, I'm going to get you to come up and face the crowd, okay? And next, we have Riley Bannion. Riley Riley is the daughter of Mary Tally and John Banning. And Riley is also an 11th grade student at Joshua High School. And Riley's hobbies and interests are, she likes to play basketball, throw discus, and she is also a student trainer. Riley is a student who is always kind, always polite, and is always willing to help. The students and staff got it right when she was voted the kindest female student at Joshua High School. Once again, we are so proud of our Joshua High School most kindest student. Let's do that. And you all will stand with me, and if you will thank Mayor Black, and the citizens of the planet.
Apologies to the flag of the United States of America, and to the relevant representatives, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's right. I'm going to take a shot. Oh, no, I have to look at that before I do. I'm going to take a shot.
A resolutions to lead Texas, one straight, under God, land and individual.
Okay, now, um, this is.
Joshua ISD will be the highly ranked model of educational excellence.
Let's give these two a. Okay, in our workshop, we reviewed our enrollment report, our attendance report, we reviewed our ADA report, our child nutrition report, property tax collection report. We reviewed the monthly financial report, monthly and year-to-date status of special revenue fund. We looked at our check register, we reviewed the police department report, our calendar began. And now we've got our 2020, 2021 spring athletic scorecard, and so Coach D Harmon.
Right, so, I finished, I'm going to introduce her.
The, um, your head coach, so you're going to start with.
So, start off with, this has been the most exciting, um, spring special that I've ever been a part of. It's, uh, it's pretty awesome to be able to compete in a district and not just, um, not just. It's, uh, it's pretty awesome to be able to compete in a district and not just, um, not just finish in the middle of the pack, but also compete for district championships. And this spring, almost every single team that we had, the competition team, made it to the postseason. And several of them made it past the first round into the second round. That doesn't happen very often. And one of the great things about being able to make it to the postseason is that your younger players have the opportunity to continue to practice. And they kind of see what it is that needs to be done to be able to make it there whenever they have the opportunity. So every single team that we had, with the exception of one this spring, had that exact same thing. So our kids got a chance to compete and practice longer. You know, and one of the reasons that that is allowed is because we have great kids. Not only are they great kids, but they competed at a high level. We've got great kids, we've also got great coaches. You know, I've been in the business now for 22 years and I've, I've not been around a solid group like this in my entire career. From the players to the coaches. You know, it's, it's an exciting place to be. I'm so glad that I get to be a part of this. I know that next fall, I'm going to do everything I can to make sure that whenever I'm doing this for myself, for the football program, I'm able to do what these guys are supposed to be able to do. And I talk about how great of a season that we had. So our head coaches, so Coach Brooks, Coach Grissom, Coach Ritter, Coach Wright, Coach Bethel, Coach Shepard, Coach Branson, Coach Connolly, Coach Goodling. And, uh, Coach Lockhart, I apologize. Some of the very best coaches that I've been around. They compete every single game. Some of the calls and some of the things that they did this season, it took a lot of guts to do. And it kind of went out on a limb to put us in the best situation that we could be in. And there were, there was something from each one of them that, that they showed. It takes a lot of courage to be able to do that as a coach because sometimes those things that you expect to go one way don't always go that way. And, uh, and you look really good if you, if it works and you look really bad if it doesn't work. But they were, but they, uh, they put it out there and they competed and they made our kids better and it's a, and it's a pleasure to get to work with these guys. Uh, but we'll start with basketball, Coach Connolly.
You'll work out from him, man.
Coach Lockhart?
He was one huge boy. Hey, looking at our scorecard, from our middle school, upper middle school, improved from beginning to end, that's what we want. That'd be great coming. I'm really excited about our freshman that are coming up next year when we combine both those, it's going to be really good. And my high of two middle schools has really helped. I've got 60 kids playing, uh, a lot of kids playing quality competition, so it's really helped. And I'm excited about our freshman next year. Going into our high school, uh, you know, we got, I know JV and varsity, we were both quarantined for two weeks at the beginning of the year. And then with you all moving the football back, I can get my football, basketball players to be sent to the A, so we got off to a slow start, but we finished really good. Our JV team, uh, actually with everybody there, we finished six and nine and went five and five in districts. So we really started playing good at the end of the, end of the year. Uh, my varsity team, like I said, we got quarantined for two weeks. Um, and then football, basketball, once we jailed, we started playing pretty good. A lot of districts started. You know, it was a crazy year with that and then I got another kid that was quarantined at the beginning of the district. And the kids just stepped up. They did a great job. I had a great group this year that stepped up and just took on the challenge. You came out seriously, we had a lot of exciting games. Uh, we had a bunch of dunks, we had a broken backboard again. They were really excited. We had a lot of media attention on our line. The guy did the phrase of the week. It was really fun. But you know, and once district started, we were able to beat Ennis twice, twice, which was a playoff team. Uh, we had a 12, we were down 12 going into the fourth quarter against Waco University. And then they ended up second place team. We came back and won their game. Our student body, even with COVID, was awesome all year long. They helped us so much. Uh, and then we were able to get better plays. And we talked about it all year, about getting better each and every game. And we were able to break the 39-year drought and get into the playoffs. And that's what this group wanted to do. That's what they struggled to do. And, um, it, it was just an awesome year and I've been so proud of them and proud to be coaching here and coaching those kids. Thank you.
And I know you wanted to come out.
I know, you just come here. I was really disappointed because my first three years, you know, in the red. And we really, really worked hard and last year was our first year being green and we made, uh, made it big. And so we were so bored meeting and it's like, oh, it's like green. So I was really, really proud of our desire for randomness here. Our junior highs had a great season, kind of like Chris Longrave was saying, we have a really good ninth grade group coming up. I think they're going to help our, they're going to continue to be successful. Um, our freshmen were first in district this year. Every year they've gotten better. My first year here, we had 10 players and eight of them had never played basketball. And now we're getting freshmen that have played at least two years in the old school, if not more than that. So huge improvement with the amount of basketball these kids are playing before they get to us. Our JV struggled a little bit, but they're getting better and better and better. A lot of the games that they lost were really close and so their record didn't really reflect how much they improved. And then our varsity, um, we tied for third in the district. We beat Cleveland. That's the first time we've beat Cleveland since I've been here and that was awesome. Our goal to next year is to be double times and to be third place solid by ourselves, maybe fighting for second place. So we advanced to the playoffs. Last year was the first time that we had been to a playoffs in a very long time. And we played Lancaster and never being there, we were very shell shocked. We didn't really know what to expect and it was not a good first half. Then we settled down and played a lot better second half, but it was a little too late. So this year we wanted that to be different. And we played Highland Park and we lost by 14 points. So it was a much better showing this year. And our goal going into next year is to be the first team in school history to make playoffs for three consecutive years. This year was the first time we had back-to-back playoff appearances in 63 years. So they are really, really starting to show some improvement. The things that we do to improve and keep improving, we really focus on offseason, spring league, summer league, AAU play, SQT, SQTs for high school. Open gym, skill sessions, Alpha Alts is a huge part of our success. Uh, we go to camps, we do a team camp at the end of summer. The varsity visits to middle schools and demonstrates skills. We didn't get to do that this year because of COVID, but that's something I feel is very important that we would like to add back in once we get back to a little bit more normal. Uh, we encourage cross-team and cross-sport support. So like we encourage the middle school that comes to high school, we do some build school games. And then we also try to go support other sports as well because we're one big family. We think that's really important. We do leadership training and then I do individual player conferences for the high school kids at the beginning of the year to talk about strengths, weaknesses, what you need to use an individual to get better. But I appreciate our community and support. It's been amazing. When we went to the playoffs, even during COVID, the gym was very full. We had a lot of support. We had to make last minute changes. And it was just a crazy season, but everybody really just monitored and adjusted. And we appreciate all the support. I really appreciate our board and how supportive y'all are and all that you do for us. Like, I'm very, very blessed to be here and I appreciate everything that everybody does to help us be successful.
I don't know what else to say about the group. I don't know, you talked about this all day, the person being in this group, the varsity group job this year. So many comeback wins, so many walk off the hands. I mean, we only returned one kid to this team that ever played in this year baseball game on the varsity level. And accomplished a pay conference this year and taken a number 14 in the state for three games. It's pretty awesome. So it's not the way we want it to end, but we had a little bit of time to reflect and look back. It was a good ride. And I couldn't be more proud of the kids. They worked so hard here around. And a lot of my kids, I mean, outside of the school day, outside of what we do, they just up on their own. And to me, that shows a lot of value. I mean, I've had kids before school lifting weights, kids that come after school or after practice, they'll go lift and make sure they're in the best shape. We've had a lot of good value in, um, due to the varsity record, 17, 17, one. We don't play anybody that's not part of the performance. We go to tournaments, we play five A's in six states. The only four A team that we played this year is still playing. And so my philosophy is I want to play the best period, so I want, I want somebody to show me what our weaknesses are. So when we go play, you know, those tournaments, I think one weekend we had my win five. And it was, it was a lovely weekend to make a fan and we rebound and you know, what's going on? And then the next weekend, you know, we show up and we go free to, and the world's rocking. You know, when you're dealing with kids 16, 17 years old, they have a tendency to panic too. But I'm just a big kid and I kind of panic myself. But in the district they were in, baseball, I mean, I know a lot of you guys don't know the depth of how tough this district is. And just getting into playoffs in our district is big. Uh, we still have two teams in our district that are still going and still play for us at Canada this weekend. So we'll have at least one team in our district that we have never before. But going into the last week there, we had to win on Tuesday, kind of secure a spot for our guys. And so that was a game we had to go down and play. Well, I've been here for, what am I, this is my fourth year, I got COVID here, 0 and 4, 0 and 5 because we lost in the home. And I was like, if we got to win this game, we're going to win. Those kids showed up. We want to get another thing going there. And that was, that was probably the coolest moment that we had this year. And so we secured our spots. So going into Friday, we could end up being first, we could be fourth, we could be any seed because everybody's just going to show up. We played again to make the high school, it's been low gear and we had to walk off, kind of our thing this year, those kids. And so we end up tying the first in the district, us and course of Canada, 84. And so we go down, we had to play a seeding game that we lost, so we ended up two seed. But even our bi-district round this year was tough. Roy City was a good team and we lose game one. Again, no panic. Those kids are just going to show up and play. And so we're fortunate enough to win by district. And I did some digging and I'm pretty sure I'm correct, but we, this group, these last couple of years, last three years we've been here, is the first that's ever gone to playoffs three straight years. Surely the first that's won bi-district three years in a row. So my numbers are getting bigger and bigger. Kids are excited about playing baseball here and so it's been good. And like I said, the kids that we have are so dedicated. I mean, I just tip my hat to them because they want to win so bad. And they'll do whatever it takes. And you can see that when you look at our younger guys, my JV blue, we're 12 and eight on the year. And the JV white, which is mostly fresh and we're nine and five. And if you look at, you know, you see green, I think this is the first year I've had all green, which means that the depth of the program is getting better. And we have kids at all levels there competing at a high level. And I mean, we, we do a little middle school madness thing where our high school kids go coach the middle school kids in a tournament, all the way from Texas to South Bay. And in those middle school madness tournaments, I can tell you that there's a lot of Joshua baseball players coming. And it's cool for those older kids to be there and give, coach, you know, listen, yeah, imagine that. But I'm just, like I said, proud of the program. I have a great staff. I couldn't do it by myself. Not the five A, six A, really, you can't do it by yourself. Coach Snack and Coach Tiger have been a godsend, committing great for our program as well. But I thank you guys, thank your support and like some of the other coaches have already said, we had more support this year from our community and from our kids and from our administration than we ever had previously. And we had kids ride a fan bus, two and a half hours to Tyler, Texas. And I promise you, when those kids get off that bus and our boys saw those kids pouring out their noise makers, make it a little, they gave it a little bit more adrenaline, gave them some juice. And it was awesome to see. And like I said, going back a couple of years ago, that's something that wouldn't have happened. So it's been a really good change in my kids. I promise you, our whole program appreciates. Thank you.
Okay, who knows, we don't know, we have to say a few words. And first thing I want to point out is just by telling you how good my JV did this year. They were first place in district and again, that's made up of a lot of freshman kids. So that'll tell you the depth that's in our program. Uh, we probably had only two upperclassman starters on that JV team. And like what Coach Shepard said, our kids play a lot of ball outside of school. And I can't tell you how much that DVAT is going to help us. Some of my kids live there this year and that is only going to help, you know? And, uh, I don't know if you guys are familiar with all the social media things that you can watch games on. I usually like to go to their games. In fact, I'll tell them whenever they come to my camp, let me know whenever you're playing over the summer. I'll come watch you. And if they can't come watch you, let me know if it's on Facebook. Let me know if it's on Athletes Live. Whatever the case may be, so that they know I care about what they're doing outside of school. And I'll tell you, our community is very good about getting their kids into leagues and into programs and traveling all the way to the state to play ball. Especially softball. I'll tell you, we've got a great group of kids coming up. My varsity was made up of four freshman starters. And I basically lose two senior starters. So that right there tells you that we have a young team because they didn't have much experience the year before with the shortened season. And I really felt like they could benefit from that because we had a real slow start at the beginning of the season, varsity was. And we struggled and we couldn't find our jail, we couldn't connect. And by the time it rolled into the district season, I was, I was dreading kind of going into the district season because we hadn't reached yet. But when it was time to play and it was time to carry on and it really meant something, that's what they did. They, they picked it up. We had several, I won't say knockoffs, but we had several, uh, extra inning games throughout our D's, our district play. We finished second place in district. And in the first round of district, we had, um, two losses. And at that point, going into the second round, that put us in anywhere, you know, in the jungle, like he said, from fourth place to first place. Boy, we finished up in second and I'm going to be more proud of my girls for that. And for those of you that don't know, and you have a neighbor, you have kids, you, you know people in the community, we have a camp area here. So if you guys can encourage your kids to come up, I, I will not be here next year. I'll be replaced by someone I do not be more proud to, to be replaced by. She was one of my players. And, uh, she is ready. She came and met the kids. She's going to do the camp this year. Her name is Asha Vincent. And some of you might know her because she was here before as a, an athlete, a coach. And now coming back and taking over the head job. She's already got programs in place for the summer for these kids to continue what they've got going on right now. They're coming to Alpha Alts. They're going to do some, some skill stuff. So we're just going to just take it and run and not skip a beat. I expect it to be just as green as it is right, right there with her when she takes over. Okay, great. We want to meet you all and thank you.
For those of you that don't know me, I'm a staff member on the North Side. The last few years have been great. Look at U C, my fourth year here, since we've been here, we've been really focused on building this program. Um, this year, uh, we had a JV. And, um, maybe just for me and for all of us, just getting to finish it this year for the spring sports, uh, I think athletics would, this may have been the most fun that ever was for me, um, because we got taken away from the soccer field. Uh, not because we got beat, um, but because of all the virus stuff. So, uh, I'm super thankful, uh, just, I mean, more than anything. Uh, and, you know, it was a good year, soccer wise, our JV finished third. Um, man, they, there was a lot of stuff that happened, and I'm really proud of them. Uh, they had a really good last weekend of the year, the district tournament, that's pretty fun. Um, and, yes, middle school stuff, like Coach Goodling was saying, and, uh, I am so thankful for Coach Goodling, and, you know, we just bounce ideas off each other all the time. Uh, but I keep saying, like, going to the middle school is kind of fun. Like, it's, it's not drudgery to go down there and work with kids who want to work on. And that's pretty great. So, um, middle school, which same deal, they're playing right now, so they don't have records up there like our, on the girl side, we're final one right now combined, uh, the losses we think will be awful. So that's it. Um, speaking of everybody else. Uh, so varsity, um, thirteen, four to eight, that's definitely the most ties I've ever been a part of this season, that was exciting. Uh, but we ended up second in district, and a chance to win on the last day, kind of laying the eggs, uh, that was okay. Uh, one, you know, awesome happens here, you know, us and the boys both got to notice that varsity round, pretty neat. Uh, and had a ton of fans there on that shooter. Um, we got through the area round, and shoot out, and went twelve shooters, insane. Um, don't keep your hands up there, or otherwise you had all the kids there too. And we lost in the regional quarters, uh, which is fine. Uh, but, you know, just for, for that team, this was our eighth straight bi-district title, um, and the four three quarter final appearances in the last seven years. So pretty proud of that. Proud that we've been able to accomplish what has kind of has perpetuated a little bit. Um, fighting for what we're doing, uh, maybe able to leave a competitive basis, which is more than most people would have to bear. Uh, but, um, it's a good year, and we're super thankful, super thankful, um, to be glad to thank you. So, that's that, thank you all very much.
I'm Craig Walker, the head of the varsity program. Um, part of the JV boys and girls, we ended up, uh, in the same place in district this year. Uh, have a lot of young kids, talented, they like to work hard. The biggest thing is, they like to compete. Uh, track is one of those things that you can't hide, uh, it's you and five, six, seven other people on the track, and you can't hide a position. Uh, so you have to get after it. And right now, in the high school and in the junior high, uh, we have a lot of kids who like to compete. First thing I'd like to do is recognize the track coaches. Um, Coach Clayton, Coach Walker, Coach Lambly, uh, Coach Cross, Coach Sean, and Coach Rose, uh, do an amazing job. Uh, we're fortunate enough to have quite a few track coaches with us, uh, where we can focus on field events. Our coach, Cole Ball, Coach Walker loves the pad jump, Coach Clayton, Coach Lambly do the shot and discus. Coach Cross and Coach Sean do the long triple jump, and Coach Davis takes the hurdles. And the events that it takes coaching and technique, we do very well with. Um, and we also started doing quite well with running against two horses. Uh, for the girls, they finished varsity girls finished second in district this year. Uh, not a lot of seniors this year, but the seniors we had, excellent leaders, kind of showing young girls the roads and what we expect of them. We do have, uh, a lot of new freshmen sophomore returning from the varsity team for next year, so we're looking for good passion for them. The boys, varsity, uh, we went to seven individual invitational track meets, including the district and area. We did not come in second while, whatever the varsity was. So that's the reason, and nothing. Um, we were first in district, first in area, which has never been done, now there's some discrepancy, because in ninety-two, the boys won regionally, but they did not have a area meet. So this was the first year that Joshua's won an area meet. Uh, they'd be regionally, we were fifth. Um, reason two is, by far the toughest region in the state, most of the time, the provincial state championship team will come out of region two. And we tied for fifth in that region. Uh, just unbelievably proud of these young men and the coaches, uh, the support that we got. With COVID and all the restrictions, we hosted seven track meets in Joshua this year. Uh, Coach Goodling and his soccer booster club, they were in the concession stand, whenever I sent him the schedule, he thought that was crazy. I think we coached the army got here, and we're hosting a lot of track meets, I think he thought that was crazy as well. Uh, but it worked out. Uh, so for the boys soccer, running the concession stand, thank you for all of that support. Um, to finish up the year, we had some young men ranked thirty hours, given the four hundred, Griffin Gator was ranked number fourteen in five A. Mason Ford in the eight hundred was ranked number thirty-one in five A. The four by four relay was ranked number twenty-three. Uh, that was Carson Double, Kenny O'Malley, Towerstone, Griffin Gator, Mason Ford, and Wood Youngens. In the high jump, Towerstone was tied for twelfth, Logan Rice was tied for twelfth, twelfth in the state of Texas. Uh, Ronald Belfer on the pole vault, uh, tied for number four in the state. Xavier Edwards tied for number thirty, Dave Rollin tied for number thirty, and Towerstone in the long jump was, uh, ranked number three by the area's leaders. Uh, I guess, we've got a lot of young talent coming up, better seventh, eighth, freshmen sophomores, uh, we're looking to repeat. Thank you.
COVID, we were playing the golf around, four tournaments in the fall, four and spring in the first district. COVID messed us around last year in the fall. The tournaments were, instead of playing against other people, play with everybody on your team. You get to the, get to the course, check in, you go to the tee box, you start playing, get through, you go home. They don't want you interacting with anybody, it's UIL guidelines. So once, once in the spring, we get to start playing against other, other kids from other schools. Uh, boys varsity won tournament, got second twice, we got second in district. Girls got second, third a few times, and we got second in district. Ladies, first time since I've been coaching about twenty years, got that boys and girls both made regional team lines. Uh, girls ended up twelfth in region, boys ended up eighth in region. Uh, very proud of them. Uh, girls had a senior, junior, three freshmen, we lost a senior to graduation. Boys, I didn't grant to anybody, so I have all them back. So my assistant, which is my wife, sent her to go recruit some girls. Apparently she talked to them very nicely. So she's got something lined up, so we, we lost one girl, the rest of them, she's active at the place.
Very interesting with COVID. Because, you know, you got kids going up to labs, everyone's touching, lifting the bars, you got spotters, you got wrappers. So they had to take the time and really put some lengthy rules down. So we usually have like Thursday night, uh, club with area schools, where there's seven schools, but we just looked that up this year. So we lifted with Al Beredo, Laxahatchee, and they're both in on a rotating basis, all are boys and girls. And there was no like team results at the end, it was all just to try to get our weights in order to make regionals in the states. So we started with four boys meets and four girls meets. Um, we had about, we had twenty kids, uh, uh, we even was twelve boys and eight girls. I was proud that the girls' numbers were up from previous years. Um, they, uh, they did a fantastic job, it's a great group of kids. Interesting thing is, we were only able to get in six meets. All right, I'm from Iowa, all right, so snowstorms, I'm fine with that, but here, no snow plows, anything like that. So we had canceled, one boys meet, one girls meet, which meant for some of our kids that were building up strength, it came down to one boys meet and one girls meet in order to get into regionals. Uh, so for our boys, we had Brad Gregory of Dakota Justice were able to go to regionals. Um, Brad finished tenth in regionals, and I believe took home his twelfth. Now, the difference between, um, Brad and making it to state was a matter of fifty pounds. So that was the difference between second place and tenth place. And he had the weight on the bar, he just couldn't, he just couldn't finish the dead one. Uh, for the girls' side, we had Abby Mitchell that made regionals, we had Josephine Mitchell, who'd be her sister, and we had Isla Jackson. Uh, those three made regionals. Um, Abby was the only one that made state, and she couldn't be here tonight. She makes state, she finished third. The interesting thing with Abby, she's a junior coming back, is thirty-five pounds separated her and first place. She had the weight on the bar, once again, on the dead one, she don't get it, she just couldn't lock it out. So it is so close for some of our kids, uh, even on the boys. So for the boys soccer running the concession stand, thank you for all of that support. To finish up the year, we had some young men ranked thirty hours of stadium. In the four hundred, Griffin Gager was ranked number fourteen in five eight. Mason Ford in the eight hundred was ranked number thirty-one in five eight. The four by four relay was ranked number twenty-three. That was Carson Duffle, Kenny O'Malley, Tyler Stone, Griffin Gager, Mason Ford, and Wood Youngins. In the high jump, Tyler Stone was tied for twelfth. Logan Rice was tied for twelfth in the state of Texas. Ronald Belton, the pole vault, tied for number four in the state. Xavier Edwards tied for number thirty. They probably tied for number thirty. And Tyler Stone in the long jump was ranked number three by the end of the year in Texas. I guess we've got a lot of young talent coming up. Better than seven, eight freshmen sophomores. We're looking to repeat. Thank you.
COVID, we were playing the golf around for tournaments in the fall or in the spring in the first district. COVID messed us around last year in the fall. The tournaments were instead of playing against other people, play with everybody on your team. You get to the turn, get to the course, check in, you go to the tee box, you start playing, you through, you go home. They don't want you interacting with anybody. It's UIL guidelines. So when, when the spring, we had to actually start playing against other kids from other schools. Boys varsity won tournament, got second twice. We got second in district. Girls got second, third few times, and we got second in district. Ladies, first time since I've been coaching about twenty years, got that boys and girls both made regional team lines. Girls ended up twelfth in region, boys ended up eighth in region. Very proud of them. Girls had a senior, junior, three freshmen. We lost a senior to graduation. Boys, I didn't graduate anybody, so I have all them back. So my assistant, which is my wife, sent her to go recruit some girls. Apparently she talked to them very nicely. So she's got something lined up. So we, we lost one girl, the rest of them just act like they're.
Powerlifting, very interesting with COVID. You know, you got kids going up to labs, everyone's touching, lifting the bars, you got spotters, you got wrappers. So they had to take the time and really put some lengthy rules down. So we usually have like Thursday night club with area schools, where there were seven schools, but we just looked that up this year. So we lifted with Al Beredo, Laxahatchee, and they're both in on a rotating basis, all of boys and girls. And there was no like team results at the end. It was all just to try to get our weights in order to make regionals in states. So we started with four boys meets and four girls meets. We had about, we had twenty kids. We even was twelve boys and eight girls. I was proud that the girls numbers were up from previous years. They, they did a fantastic job. It's a great group of kids. Interesting thing is we were only able to get in six meets. All right, I'm from Iowa, all right? So snowstorms, I'm fine with that, but here, no snow plows, anything like that. So we had canceled one boys meet, one girls meet, which meant for some of our kids that were building up strength, it came down to one boys meet and one girls meet in order to get into regionals. Going to our boys, we had Brad Gregory of Dakota Justice were able to go to regionals. Brad finished tenth in regionals and I believe took total of twelve. Now, the difference between Brad and making it to state was a matter of fifty pounds. So that was the difference between second place and tenth place. And he had the weight on the bar, he just couldn't, he just couldn't finish the dead end. For the girls side, we had Abby Mitchell that made regionals. We had Josephine Mitchell, who'd be her sister, and we had Hazel Jackson. Those three made regionals. Abby was the only one that made state, and she couldn't be here tonight. She makes state, she finished third. The interesting thing with Abby, she's a junior coming back, is thirty-five pounds separated her and first place. She had the weight on the bar once again on the dead end, she don't get it, she just couldn't lock it out. So it is so close for some of our kids. Even on the boys side, we had Cooper Slasney, which I know is going to help football program. He had some shoulder surgery. He wanted to lift in one meet, had him lifted in the other two meets. He's also a regional and probably a state qualifier. So there are some good things happening in there. I wish those kids, I really wish Abby could have been here tonight. I know she, she wanted to be here, she had something, but they were excited to go to state. You know, those kids were excited to go to state, they were excited to compete. And I've never, I've had state powerlifting before, but I've never seen it like that, where so many people were so excited just to compete, where everyone was helping everyone. Powerlifting is very different that way. You know, they think, oh, I'll help you wrap your legs. Well, I'll help you stick this down and be beautiful, you know? But it was fun, so I'm very excited for what the kids have coming up in power. Thank you.
I'm John Griffin, I'm the Woods and Girls. This is our second year of swim. So all of us, so last year, we did a, we finished eighth, and we had a girls relay that advanced to regionals. We only had six swimmers last year. And they only, like we're at ten points. This year, we have eleven. Due to some COVID rules and stuff like that, they limited the amount of people that could go to regionals and then from powerlifting. It gets one in to the next. But as a team, they did get two. They changed, we changed districts. This year, we did a much bigger district. I can't speak. Highly enough about my kids. A lot of them last year was there, it was the first, first time to test that swimming. I only had two swimmers last year that had any experience. And I brought everybody back this year this month. And they have, I wonder if they're, they're their first year. So they work their tails off. I mean, practice at five every morning or five every week from August to February. So there's a lot of hard, there's a lot of hard work, and they're investing. I'm only losing one swimmer this year. Graduating and exciting thing is I already had at least ten freshmen that are in school. And coming, I've only been able to go on basketball so far. So it's super exciting. Our program is growing. And there is a lot of people that are interested.
So this spring tennis. Had a good year. And we're actually, we have several, several of our coaches, our coach in tennis. And we just are in the process of replacing Coach Verbar. He's, he helped us for, I guess, two years now. He's, he's going to do something else instead of Coach Tennis. He came in, that was one of the first meetings that I had. He came in and sat down in front of me and said, I volunteered to help and I'm done. I don't want to coach tennis anymore. We're in the process of hiring his replacement. Really think that tennis program is going to grow because of that. I've had several junior highs ask about being able to come up and be a part of our tennis program. So I think in the future, we're going to, we're going to grow the sport and we're going to do a whole lot better. And just keep on working.
I want to say something before you guys leave. I want to, tonight we have lots of recognitions. We always do in May because it's the end of the year and we're finishing up. But so many of you stood up tonight and said, if this was the first, this was history. There is more green, like just so many more first time historical events that occurred collectively. We're also going to be recognized in just a second, Lieutenant Colonel's going to stand up. We have an opportunity he's going to share, I don't want to steal his thunder, but for ROTC. Mr. Snicks here, we're going to be recognizing the band, first year that we've done an indoor performance, help me with the name, I know I always think wrong, wind ensemble. National champion there. We've got a young lady we're going to be recognizing for state academic UIL as well as two other students who qualified for academic UIL at the state level. With all of the obstacles that we faced this year and just the unknowns and last year being taken away from us at the end. Everybody pulled together in our kids, in our staff, you can see the excitement. And many of you said, the kids that showed up at the games, at the event, to support the energy that was there, the energy that our kids are out there performing. Our vision statement to be a highly regarded model of educational excellence in all things. It's just, I'm sitting here listening to you guys and knowing what other recognitions we have tonight, and it's just amazing. Amazing. I'm so proud and just so proud to be a part of this district with these amazing educators, these amazing students, and these amazing families. So all of you, thank you. And you're welcome to stay if you want. Okay, now we have Lieutenant Colonel. I didn't, I didn't want to steal your fun.
My name is Jim Davidson, I'm the senior naval science instructor for the ROTC. And we had been here to mostly give a lot of support, but I want to tell you a story. Last Thursday, because of the inspiration of Coach Clayton, who is a former jarhead. The year before last, we did what we call the military signing day. So we took that opportunity for all the kids that were planning on serving in the military after high school or going to college, I mean, you know, serving in military after that, and they passed over. Couldn't it last year, and then we did it again last Thursday. Well, I'd tell you, the way we did it was we had a mass evacuation drill, didn't tell the kids what was going on. Had them all fall out into our stadium, and you would be absolutely shocked at how well behaved those kids were. It was the most inspiring thing that you ever saw. They, they were respectful, receptive, everything. And so we brought a general in to administer the oath of office. And General Lawson was like, kids are freakishly well behaved, you know? It was an awesome testament to the teachers and administrators and so forth. And with that being said, as good as those kids were, I'd just like to mention that I think that my cadets are just a little bit better. One of the things I'd like to show you is we're, in order to be a distinguished unit, we had to be in the top forty percent. There's fifty-eight units in Area Ten, there's six hundred and fourteen of these units nationally. They're divided into thirteen areas. We are Area Ten, there's fifty-eight units in this area. And we've got to be in the top twenty percent in order to be a distinguished unit. So the very first time that Ms. Merrick brought me in and said, you know, rate the scorecard. I came in and I said, okay, well, we were number three, and we were distinguished unit. And if we're ever not a distinguished unit, then you need to acquire the senior naval science instructor. Well, then seventeen, eighteen, we fell to number six, we're back up to number three in two thousand and eighteen and nineteen. And then they did something to us. They changed the criteria for the way that they determined who the distinguished unit was. They had a spreadsheet, and in that spreadsheet, what they do is, is they try and crunch the numbers and take as, as much subjectivity out of it as they can by looking at things like your rival competitions, your drill competitions, you know, and how you, you placed it, how many kids got academy appointments, ROTC's scholarships, et cetera. And what they said was, they said, look, you know, not every program can have great shooters, and not every program can have a great drill team, but everybody can volunteer. And all of a sudden, our numbers fell off significantly. We dropped to number nine, and certainly I'm thinking, well, I might lose my job. We're not going to be as state rated anymore because we, we can't, we can't hang with the big horse. So we're competing against like Spring Texas with five hundred and eighty cadets. You know, you, you can't host community service numbers like they have, not with a hundred and thirty seven cadets. So we were kind of inspired by some of the buildings that we had seen that, that Mr. Greenwood had been building, and we thought, maybe we could flood the clothing exchange, you know, basically like our own goodwill, so to speak, only everything's free. And put it in here, run it for the cadets, and then right here during the school day, do something great for the schools, do something great for the community. We can get those community services out of there. So we set it down up here to brief the school board. Before Christmas last year, the school board loved the idea, very graciously threw ten thousand dollars out there to, to make it even better than what we had originally planned on. And we didn't get to build before COVID hit, but we did finally open it this last year. We're a grand opening. We've got those community service hours, not as high as you want, not as high as they're going to be next year. But high enough that we were named, among other things, with our rival competitions and so forth, the number one in, in Area Ten. And our name has been thrown in the path at the national level to be, to see whether or not we're going to be named the best unit in the United States. It's the finest road field school that they just have somehow, but we got some smart kids. Our rifle team was number one at the state level, and that is long, twenty twenty-one, it says number two in the Navy. We were number one in the Navy. Shall I tell that story, Ms. Merrick? Okay, so what happened with that one was, we, we actually, there's a couple stories to tell about the rifle team. But what had happened was is they said, well, you know, too many schools couldn't travel, so they were going to do a virtual competition. And so what that meant was is that you had to either fire with another team, or bring another coach in, proctor the match, and you had video, and we did those things. But we shot the match, you know, on our own range, the weekend when we got back from Easter. And one of my shooters, Paul Butter, came back with a broken wrist. And I'm like, oh. You know, it's not always the best, it's the healthiest, and I'm like, okay, fine. So I put the alternative in there, and our score was a little bit suppressed. And so when they posted the national scores, the show this is number two. Okay, well, yeah, I guess I'm going to have to find a way to box the big trophy up and send it back, as we've won it two years running. And I'm just getting ready to go down to the post office, and I get a call from the civilian marksmanship program initiative, the team that edged the South from Arizona, because I didn't question it, had gone and shot another match, and didn't hit their score within a hundred and fifty points. So when they called them up and said, well, who proccured this? Well, did you, did you video, did you do all of those things that disqualified them? So Joshua are the national champions for a third year. Again, thanks to, you know, very generous school board. We bought those things in, we had a grand opening the week before spring break and never came back. So anyways, when we finally did come back to school last December, we wound up setting a national record that we had established three times prior, and set a national record. And we're looking at that, but the other, you know, tell us about the money? Okay, so we'll tell about the money as well. So what happened was, when all the competitions got canceled, so the, the school board very generously provides us with a seventy-four thousand dollar system in this beautiful range, and it was awesome. And it's, and it allows our kids to get the most bang to the buck, so to speak, you know, with the training and so forth. We're watching their score, migrating up and up and up, and we were already pretty good. And then everything shuts down for COVID. And they had to cancel all these national competitions. So they had a whole bunch of money, and the philosophy in the Navy is use it or lose it. And then nobody could get back into their school, onto their government computers to put in claims, and they're going, we got to spend this money. And so I'm like, okay, I bought a compressor, I bought rifles, I got all sorts of stuff. And then finally, the area manager calls in and he says, um, how much is that system cost? I'm like, seventy-four thousand dollars, you good to get the receipt? I'm like, uh, yes, sir, just can you get it to me? Oh, yeah. And the Navy reimbursed the money back to the school district in the entire amount of seventy-four thousand dollars. So we won it just all the way around. Now, the drill team, it's not red. But it's also says V and D, not because it's moss, just did not do, we were not allowed to go to any drill. Nobody was. But I will tell you that my drill team are the kids that I'm most proud of because they knew that they weren't going to be able to go to any tournaments all year long. And yet they were out there two hours every single day, busted doms, front side post before and all that stuff. You know, and taking the meetings, including the seniors, that knew that they were going to go to a competition again, and were training those freshmen. And they did get to do one performance, and that was the Navy ball, and I know that I would have, they would have absolutely hated that. Community service is not as high as we want, it's going to be higher next year, much, much higher. And then scholarship opportunities. With scholarship opportunities, and we said, well, green is, if we get over a million dollars worth of scholarship opportunity, just if you think that's a nice round. Well, this year, it's three point two, and it's still no limit because we're still waiting for the Texas Army's scholarship and so forth to come in, those are normally awarded in August. So we only get about another two hundred thousand dollars that should be coming in on those. The compliments of Representative Glenn Brown's office in August, Texas, really, really good year of Joshua the best. So it was a good year on that as well, and then we got enrolled. So this is where I would say one last story, and just so you know, to have an understanding of we're in that enrollment, we're going to stay on red, and we're never going to get out of the red, probably. And the reason for it is, one of the things that we could always look for was, once we get about a hundred and two, we get third instructor. And that solved some problems for us, you know? When I'm under red with the rifle team a lot, basically we got a red two grid, because I got to dump all my kid on National Unionville. And, you know, he's, he's got to take care of them, we just, a third person would really help out in that respect. One of the really good things that we heard was is that a lot of people liked what JROTC is producing. And the first time this program really grew was in nineteen ninety-three, or in the early nineties. Because at that time, the chair of the Torrance East staff was General Colin Powell. And he was a product of JROTC, if you like. And so whenever he was chairman, he pushed through into law, there would be thirty-five hundred of these units established nationally. And this program came about as a part of that push, that initial U plus money and so forth, and they kept building it up. Well, there was a mountain push year before that, and this was part of that, you know, bringing forward this seven hundred billion dollar defense budget to yourself pushed through, and that accepted that they were going to. they were going to expand these programs to 6,000 nationally, and that's a floor, not a ceiling. They like what we produce, they want more of them. So Cleveland's getting one, you know, they'd asked them, what's going to go down there? They're going to have more of these everywhere. And at some point, and I'm not sure when, we figured about a new high school. Are we?
Yeah.
Yeah? I don't know. There's a thing about it, you know, that there might be.
I like the bank.
Well, if we can continue to grow, that there might be a new high school. And, you know, and the thought process was for the expansion, that if we got in on this early enough and we requested early enough, that an ROTC could be included in that new high school as a plan, as opposed to an afterthought, you know, that you could actually build spaces in that high school and so forth. I've heard some years back that we were looking at like 2025 or something like that. Remember, I'm just going to leave you, I'm not a chief, so I don't know. But the last thing that's not on, you know, the 117 numbers, the fact that we want to focus on quality. We have our air patrons, we're not afraid to ask them, believe if they don't adjust well, you know, they, we might not be the right program for them. And, you know, we're not there for district, we're there to provide opportunities. And but the one thing that's not captured up here that I would like to throw out to all of you, is is that in a little bit, when we start recognizing the different programs that come in here, several of my seniors have been there. In the four years that they spent here in high school, these are the intangibles, these are the things that you can't capture up here. They met the last D Little Race, they met Tuskegee GM, they not met Navajo Code Office, they got to go to Bush Presidential Library, they got to go to the Coro, the private Coro Library, they met Los Coros, they met Allen West, they met Clint Roots, they met the last flag rager, Zuny Wachima. Yeah. Yeah, and and most of them, they fully covered it. That's pretty cool. Wait till they're 25. Wait till they look back at all the people and all the opportunities that they've had in just four years of high school. And that's the stuff that you don't capture on this, but it's probably the most important thing. If that's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
When can we find out about the?
I was checking my, because I was born, I'm a bit bad, they were like, what?
So what about the? Mine or?
Yes, I don't know what you mean, but I don't know. I'm not even a principal.
Okay. Great job. Okay, Mr. Henderson, you're going to produce the bullying harassment report, prevention report in the district. So this is what our district is doing in the effort to prevent bullying harassment on our campuses in our districts.
Okay, so this is National ROTC's Bullying harassment prevention plan, operational plan, safety, woman, other students, staff, community, and justice. First bullet there is our policies and procedures that address bullying and harassment. Those are four policies at the I local, at the H local, as well as those all procedures are addressed in the handbook and the student code of conduct. Joshua is the staff, the training and addressing mental health, bullying, and active and sexual harassment and suicide prevention. These policies and procedures and guidelines are addressed with our staff and the JIC July Administrator, Administrator's Workshop, also the August Campus Level Staff Development, Staff and Faculty Meetings, as well as District Campus type based meetings. Some of the things that we do at campus level prevention, we have our Stay Alert Anonymous online tip system, toll-free bullying reporting. This is, you'll see posters around our school campuses, banners. We also have that information posted on our website. We also use Let's Talk as another avenue to be able to report any type of bullying activity or sexual harassment activity. Also, our officers are located on various campuses and can provide classroom presentations and book conference with students and parents when situations do arise. Going to the next page, our schools do a lot more in that aspect. We have assemblies at the secondary level, our counseling services are provided there. We have staff, our student safety and bullying survey, our elementary campuses have centers as well, they morning announcements that provide strategies for bullying prevention. Counselors provide individualized conflict resolution, as well as also having the process of developing stay away contracts with students who that would be separated. So you can just kind of see the vast majority of different avenues that both of our secondary campuses and our elementary campuses do offer. And then our grant community involvement, our website is a great avenue that has grant resources and education, as well as we offer a grant survey at the end of March regarding school safety. And on the last page, you'll see our numbers from our incident report. Our incident report, we had 39 total incidents through today, March 17, 2021. Of those 39 incidents, seven were burnable incidents. The number is is up slightly compared to last year. I think last year before COVID hit, it was at 35 total incidents. So just seeing those numbers, you know, we have 39 incidents that were reported, seven prime cases, and you see the various numbers on the different campuses there.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Henderson. Okay, the next report is our extracurricular handbook, and Mr. Henderson went over that in our workshop. We also reviewed our graduation information for Joshua High School, which graduation is on May 28 at 8:00 p.m., and New Horizon High School, graduation is on June 1 at 7:30 p.m. And now we've got our campus presentation from the high school, and I'm going to call the sweetheart.
We just finished the general presentation. Hour and forty-five. So with that being said, we have a whole lot of very exciting sessions, it's really awesome here. But as Ms. Merritt pointed to, we really have a program that's a good program, and just brought out of the bag, and it was just super successful, so I'm going to let you know. So all about the program, and he's going to shoot us.
I'm Steve Smoot, and happy to introduce everybody to what we call the Indoor Winds Program. We have an indoor color guard program that's been very competitive here in the district for many years. We have also had indoor drum program. Last year, we started indoor winds, which is just the wind player. Last year, on Friday, the color guard was supposed to go compete on Saturday, they were ranked number two, so they didn't get that opportunity. The wing group in their first year was ranked number one, and they didn't compete, so our season maybe is not for them. So this year, everything was done virtually, and we decided to combine our groups, because if it ended, we wanted to make sure we shared the costs, so to speak. And instead of doing our local search, the North Texas Color Guard Association, we went ahead and went to the International Search. So it's it's world championship. And there are groups from all over the world, Japanese and Denmark and... In our particular division, all team groups were from the United States, they made finals, they're one division higher than us, they just selected a group that won that, was also reaching thirty here in Texas, so we just don't get any tougher than right here. So in this this video, we combine our color guard, our drummers, and our winds, and the show is called the Matador, so our color guard members dress up like matadors, our wind player dressed up like bulls, and our percussion player with a presence watching the bull fight. And it's very theatrical, we use a lot of dance, the color guard uses sabers and flags and for dance, rifles, things like that. So this is the Matador. Well, this is also a multi cam presentation, so high cam in these college students will be just looking straight down at the whole show. This, we add multiple cameras and put it all.
Oh, wonderful. We will. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for letting us have this. Okay.
Very good. This is the best part. I'm just, I'm going to, 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 I'm[1758.12] Percussion, Addie Arguinitis, Connie Bremer, Anna Grace Doyle, Colton Gallandat, Mia Gonzalez, Kylie Jones, Cutter McBride, Julian Odom, Laird Schmalz, Emma Skorlak. Zach Tomlin and Riley Watt, and Lauren Avery-Cottin, Cheyenne Creamair, Annie Johnson, Isabella Hirschman, Elizabeth Luna, Nikita Arso, Maggie Rindon, Summer Stetson. These were all of the kids in the performance that you just saw. Let's give these kids a round of applause. And now we've got our law club middle school band. And we've got their leader and the admissions of virtual competitions. They're prepared, their conductor, Miss Rebecca Rosenthal, Justin Barry, and Kimberly Hannah, and Trent Fox. These students not only received the highest rating superior on their solo performance at the solo non-ensemble contest, they also did well enough to earn an outstanding soloist award. The inter-band outstanding soloists are Karen Palacios, Joseph Sanchez, Tobias Holman, Kylie Greening, Nathan Peacock, Ethan Van, Chase Ellis, Whitney Roy, Corinne Brewer, and Elia Khan. Seventh and eighth grade outstanding soloists, pictures are Caitlin Tate, Aubrey Kircham, Curtis Hills, Lauren Rogers, Sophie Rodriguez, Noah Johnson, Kayla Ryan, Jayden Taylor, Jordan Bustamante, Gracie Fisher, Stetson Turno, and Alexis Pritchett. Then we have our, let's get these kids around. Nichols Middle School, their conductor, Lord Nicholas Smooth, Ryan Bass, Ronnie Foster, Trent Fox, and Stephen Smooth. And this month, our Joshua High School band students had the opportunity to perform a solo for a judge, and our students performed with such class. They learned how to feel fresher, professionals introduce themselves, and perform under pressure. A large majority of our students earned a first division or superior rating and are much stronger and more confident in positions than they were before. Several students, however, earned a special award called the Outstanding Soloist Award. These students shone above all of the rest, earning this distinction of being the best performers of the contest. Beginner students earning this distinction are Amaya Washington Flute, Austin Breeze, Clarinet, Mariana Dominguez, Clarinet, Frank Holland, Clarinet, Carson DeGonsi, Clarinet, Cole Soffler, Saxophone, Lucas Cotto, Lucien, Aurora Rice, Trumpet, Ian Bauer, Horn, Eli Amhos, Tremone, Matthew Gray Willard, podium, Demetrius Holson, tuba, Matthew Carter, tuba, and Jared Foreman, percussion. Advanced students earning this distinction are Taryn Lane, flute, Allison Bayonton, oboe, Ryan Laquatera, Clarinet, Riley Hush, Clarinet, Addie Arguinitis, Clarinet, Kevin Lopez, Bass Clarinet, Nate Peito, Alto Saxophone, Joey Yule, Tina Saxophone, Seth Laxton, Trumpet, Adrian Richem, Trumpet, Lighten Hayden, Horn, Noah Field, Horn, Hayden Cooner, Horn, and Kealan Flanagan, tuba. Nichols Middle School also had the only ensemble compete at the contest. Our clarinet quartet also received an outstanding distinction, and members were Riley Hush, Addie Arguinitis, Mallory Goodwin, and Shane Wettles. Let's give all of these students a round of applause. And now we have the Joshua High School band, under the direction of Mistress Smooth. These students received outstanding soloist recognition at our JISD solo competition. Riley Benson, Luke Friedler, Tia Turno, Colton Gallandat, Jessica Jones, Carolina Juarez Bueno, Hannah Mueller, and Ben Olajide. Let's give these kiddos around to the floor. And now we've got our UIL academic team that we want to recognize. Their teacher coaches, teachers that are coaches for, Mistress Coleman Yildic, Angela Furtick, Tabitha Lane, Deborah Moreno, Penny Brewer, Celeste Zachary, Darian Corona, Adam Bell, John Richem, Angela Nichols, Douglas Massey, and Susan Gresham. Joshua High School captured its fourth consecutive district championship in UIL Academics this week by winning the District 14 5A crown. And so you can see that we've got many academic UIL district championships back there that we're very proud of. So, the total points in this particular district, it was our fourth consecutive, the total points for the championship were Joshua High School, 726 points in first place. In second place was Innis High School, 420 points. There was a big difference there. Then it's Lowkey High School, 233, Crossacana, 149, Cleveland, 125, Laco University, 44, and Red Oak, 14. Twenty-six students and 37 events competed and prospered for the regional meet April 16 through 17. Erin Ali Asari, Trinity Fox, Caleb Carr, Lake Chisholm, Cassidy Clancy, Coleman Jones, Vania Contreras, Jackson Dial, two events, George Drake, Archie Ubekkuqua, I'm sorry, Kuqua. And Allison Getty, five events, Jason Grubbs, Arthas Hussain, Blaine Merrick, three events, Hunter Marks, Jessie Molina, Ben Olajide, three events, Nancy Palacios, Trinity Pena, Kate Randall, Christopher Singleton, Daniel Smith, two events, Rory Sumian, Alyssa Tragian, Sam Tuff, and Reagan Walker, two events. Let's give these kiddos a round of applause. And now we want to recognize our boys and girls practice. We have a picture of these two that are also a picture. We've got Coach Bethel in the back also. So, these, this team, and Coach Bethel talked a little earlier about it, but we're recognizing this entire team. Boys district team champions, they were area team champions, the boys and girls area qualifier, boys and girls regional qualifiers, and a boys state qualifier. So, let me read you these names. The 2021 area qualifiers. Carson Bethel, the 4x400 relay pole vault, Ryan Bethel pole vault, Jake Broadway pole vault, Cameron Cochran, the 4x200 relay and 4x100 relay, Nathan Stewart, 800, 3200, 1600, Jordan Gammes, 4x200 relay and long jump, Griffin Gayler, 400, 4x400 relay, Celeste Eastman, Diskin, Hazel Jackson, pole vault, Kinyel Knight, 4x400 relay, McKinley Novacek, high jump, long jump, 100 hurdles, 300 hurdles, 4x400 relay, Jordan O'Vanian, 4x200 relay, Jamie Paul, 200, 4x100 relay, Logan Rice, high jump, Chris Singleton, 4x200 relay and 200, Colby Smith, triple jump, 4x200 relay, 4x100 relay, Tyler Stone, long jump, high jump, 4x400 relay, 4x100 relay, boys 4x200 relay, Cameron Cochran, Chris Singleton, Jordan O'Vanian, and Colby Smith, Kinyel Knight, and Jordan Gammes. Boys 4x400 relay, Carson Bethel, Tyler Stone, Kinyel Knight, Griffin Gayler, Nathan Ford, Jordan O'Vanian. The boys 4x100 relay, Cameron Cochran, Chris Singleton, Colby Smith, Tyler Stone, and Jordan Gammes. Girls 4x100 relay, Jamie Paul, Peyton Cole, Sawyer Colvert, and Gracie Nichols. The girls 4x400 relay, Hazel Jackson, Peyton Colver, Lauren Brill, and McKinley Novacek. These were area qualifiers. Have you ever had that many qualify for area before?
No, but.
Sir?
There was three more than we ever had.
That's what I thought, okay. We've got a lot. And then the regional qualifiers. Carson Bethel, 4x400 relay, Ryan Bethel pole vault, Jake Broadway pole vault, Cameron Cochran, 4x200 relay, Nathan Ford, 800, 3200, Jordan Gammes, 4x200 relay, Griffin Gayler, 400, and a 4x100 relay, 4x400 relay, Celeste Eastman, Diskin, Kinyel Knight, 4x400 relay, McKinley Novacek, high jump, long jump, 100 hurdles, 300 hurdles. Hazel Jackson pole vault, Jordan O'Vanian, 4x200 relay, Jamie Paul, 200, Logan Rice, high jump, Chris Singleton, 4x200 relay, Colby Smith, triple jump, 4x200 relay, Tyler Stone, long jump, high jump, 4x400 relay. Then the 4x200 relay, Cameron Cochran, Chris Singleton, Jordan O'Vanian, Colby Smith, Kinyel Knight, and Jordan Gammes. And then the 4x400 relay, Carson Bethel, Tyler Stone, Kinyel Knight, Griffin Gayler, Nathan Ford, Jordan O'Vanian. Let's give all of this group. We have more in-person than may and may not like to recognize. And come on up, Coach Bethel, our state qualifier, Mr. Ryan Bethel, pole vault, great job. And Riley, you're a, Riley, I'm sorry, Riley, you're a 10th grader.
Great.
Oh my goodness, you got great, that is outstanding. We're going to give you together, we are so proud of you. And we've got pins for both of you, and we're going to be back here next week. Aren't we? Congratulations. Great job. Thank you, Coach Bethel. Great job to your entire team. Great job. And now we've got our varsity softball virtual, and we've got Coach Raines in here. Do you want to come on up and present? She's a lab to rock here. Oh, no way. Yeah. So, Coach Bethel shared with us about her season just a little while ago, but we want to recognize these girls. And Coach, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. Coach Raines, bring the log. I've got, yeah.
A lot of bees.
Yeah, lots of bees, but you can't.
You've had a lot of naves.
Don't cry. But the team had a great, great season. They placed second in the 14 5A softball district, a very tough district. They did very, very well. Our seniors for this year, Ella Belger, Ashley Biggerstaff, M.J. Gordley, Caroline Harris, and Ally Maple. Our juniors, Ardita Gonzalez, Caitlin McGrayer, Riley Runfield, Shawna Taylor, and Maddie Warren. Our south course, or Bentley Level, and Liam Mendoza. And our freshmen, Katie Amador, Kendall Lay, Zaden Streeter, and Kylie White. And they had an outstanding season, again, second in the 14 5A district, which is a very tough district. Okay, and now we've got in-person, we've got the in-person UIL academic awards. So, we talked about all of the students that went to the regional meet, but we also had some state qualifiers for academic UIL. We have their coaches, Miss Celeste Zachary and Mr. Adam Bell. And I'm not sure if, Miss Zachary, yes, come on in, Miss Zachary. And is Dr. Bell here also?
Yeah.
Okay, turn on the hand. Okay, so let me just read about these young ladies, and their coaches are here. We've got Mr. Colin Yildic, we've got Dr. Adam Bell, and we've got Miss Celeste Zachary. So, we've got, raise your hand when I call you. It feels so good to say that now. Yes. Presentation, so Allison Getty, will you, Allison, we've got Allison, we've got Ben Olajide, and we've got Reagan Walker. And so, all of these three young ladies advanced from the UIL Academic Regional Meet to the UIL Academic State Meet. That is huge, and how big the state Texas is. Lots and lots of kiddos. Allison Getty competed at the state meet in ready writing, editorial writing, headline writing, and was the alternate for feature writing. Allison, we keep, we keep, state meeting! Ben Olajide advanced to the state meet in copy edit, and Reagan Walker advanced to the state meet as the alternate copy edit. At the state meets, Allison Getty placed sixth in headline writing, and she placed first overall in Class 5A in editorial writing. Which, which means that Allison is the 2021 Class 5A State Champion in editorial writing. Let's give all of these. All three of you ladies, outstanding, close, like, state, academic, UIL. Again, let's give you three. We want to get their coaches around those, but there's a lot of work that goes into that. Allison, you've got the UIL for, uh, place me in, you just take me in UIL, it's level. You get a certificate. So, you've got the UIL. And then Ben, yeah, I'm sorry, you've got yours. Okay, now, and thank you, Reagan, great job. And so also, Allison, you are a state champion, okay? And Ben, the editorial writing. And so I want you to know that our city is going to do a proclamation for an Allison Getty Day for this state, ready for a, a, a. And your parents, no. You, all three of you ladies are just representing Joshua High School so well, and you're so very proud of them. So, let's give them a round of applause. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. You're the joy. Okay. And now we've got Abby Mitchell. Okay, for state powerlifting, but we still want to recognize her. So, Abby is our state powerlifting participant, and she finished third in state powerlifting. So. And now we've got our BJ ROTC, um, presentation. And so we're gonna bring our officers in. Thank you, Chris. Yeah, men and women. Okay, there are, so I'm gonna read a few, um. Yes, Master Chief and Lieutenant Colonel, come on up. And so.
Yeah, they know.
We heard a little bit from Lieutenant Colonel earlier, but let me read this. Um, and this was written by Lieutenant Colonel. There are six hundred and fourteen Navy JROTC units around the United States and abroad. Those units are divided into thirteen areas. Joshua is in area ten and has been named its most outstanding unit for the school year twenty-twenty-one. Let's get them around. And then Lieutenant Colonel tells us this unit is now being considered as one of the other twelve areas as the best unit in the nation. We already know you're the best unit in the nation. In addition to being named a distinguished unit for the twentieth consecutive year, the unit also received academic honors for the seventh year in a row. Additionally, the rifle team won the Navy National Rifle Championship for the third year in a row. Three Joshua shooters qualified for the National Junior Olympics. Last fall, despite the challenges created by COVID, the unit was unable to host an exceptional birthday ball. And with the help of the school board and many generous donations, the unit was able to open the new clothing exchange for the benefit of our school and community. Credit for this achievement goes to this year's officer staff. When I write, when I call your name, you'll raise your hand, please. Cadet commanding officer Johann Hernandez. Executive officer Paul Botar. Command master chief Grant Lewis. Supply officer Bradley Mitchell. Public affairs officer Julian Odom. Rifle team captain Carlos Martinez. Platoon commander Josh Gressel. This group of seniors has been offered two point two million dollars in scholarship. Let's give them a. The incoming staff are going to be to the class for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year include, so you'll raise your hand when I call your name. Cadet commanding officer Lily Shore. Executive officer Michaela Kirk. Operations officer Caleb Persoff. Command master chief Colton Smith. And public affairs officer Nikita Porcel. Let's give this group of. And of course, we would like to thank Lieutenant Colonel and your outstanding leadership. This is for you all.
Of our twenty-three graduating seniors this year, sixteen are going into the military either immediately after high school or, uh, after four years of college or going to commission ranks. But every single kid that we had, uh, had a plan for after high school, maybe in the trade or whatever. But everybody's got someplace to go, something to do when they graduate.
Hey, y'all. And now we'd like to call up. Miss Katrina Brown. I'm sorry, Miss Madison Brown. Our parent is Katrina Brown. Miss Madison Brown, Madison, come on up. And Miss Steele, why don't you come on up with me? So Madison is being recognized for her first place finish in the statewide rabies awareness and prevention poster contest. This is the poster. Look, is that not beautiful? Amazing, very, very talented. This is the first time that a student from Joshua High School has received an award for this contest. Her poster will be used across the state. So when you see that poster, you know it's a, a Joshua student, it's Madison's poster promoting vaccinated animals against rabies. We are so excited to showcase another example of educational excellence in JISB. What have been not. You were spreading that all around what our educational excellence is by your outstanding talent. That's gonna be displayed across the state, Madison. We are so proud of you. And Madison is in eleven for the next year. So who knows what next year will be. Great job. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Right, I can't wait to see this. Great job, man.
I saw the resident students moving in.
Yeah.
Public forum for, of course, none of the common things. Our encouraged comments, which says, this district, our, or, 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 or in West Texas State, either as an individual or as a representative of the church. If there's some at this time, the board has the comments saying, the public education issues, they no longer, they have to be signed up. All those, all those.
All right, so I'll make some holders for you guys. I'll remix some stuff. Share. So I'm here today to ask the school board to revise the character of policy. Um, specifically regarding to the drugs code. The drugs code is outdated and is subject to gender bias. Uh, the policies are tied to the drugs that are provided. And the board has provided supporting information for you versus a copy of the school board's local policy on student pallbearer, uh, freedom from discrimination, harassment, and retaliation. It is clearly stated that the JISB will not discriminate based on race, religion, color, nationality, and gender. And I just look at highlighting those areas for you. Second, a copy of our JISB drug code. And that is clearly gender biased, which is very clearly. Uh, this drug code contradicts the local policy as well as the, has been unconstitutional by federal court in Texas, as we got the question. So lastly, and included is a copy of a letter that was mailed to four hundred and seventy-seven September twenty twenty. This was, um, sent by the American Civil Rights Union, the Texas branch, and it was sent September second, twenty twenty. So, um, it states in the first line, if your school's statute of drugs code appears to contain provisions that were declared unconstitutional by federal court in Texas. Uh, and I highlighted several areas in that letter as well. And I just don't feel the need to disclose any about personal experience that has involved presence of this folder should be more than the background support to your authority to have dressed for a policy. If you read it by chance, you were advised as requested. Uh, this whole online access of our surrounding school districts that may have been not much gender bias dress code. And probably town, town, town. Let's read all of that.
Good evening, everybody. How's you? Appreciate your time. Um, our request is pretty simple. Uh, we've come brought to our attention his parents for field day issue, an interest with field day that were passed ago, parents were unable to attend. So I agree.
We, uh, basically at the last meeting, we did, uh, the march meeting. We, we went through and looked at, uh, for the end of the year, but we didn't allow what was going on. And so we put in the provisions on each step of how we did it. And so that was a long one, and I asked everything, but we looked.
So I'm here tonight to ask y'all to revisit that. Allow parents to. Um, we have a whole two events. In our district, especially parents, a lot of fifty. Drag needs, for instance, we've had, uh, six or seven schools, ten drag needs, no masks, uh, no attendance policies whatsoever, as possible. Uh, most schools forced to equip with a head one. You know, in this, I'm not sure about masks, how they wear them. That's good. Uh, videos were shown here recently for ensemble, right attendance, it's an outdoor event. So that's a good thing for the kids to build. And just our task, we're gracious that we consider living on that and allow parents to attend to support, um, you know, all the, our first time, obviously, calling in prayers in those schools, the last time. Uh, appreciate you guys.
Right, we can't handle two that tonight.
So you wouldn't be able to do it. Give them now.
Dominant, you said, you said, guys? Given the items.
All right, and so, um. We've got our minutes from the previous meeting on April nineteenth and May twelve. Um, if you not have any budget in this, a council table of purchases over fifty thousand, my recommendation is that you approve, they can get the items as previously.
Second.
Welcome by my first, second, and also, any further discussion, our question? All clear? Stand up. Just say, say. Consider student answering proposal two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two. It's true.
Hi, so, um, in our workshop, Mr. Hickers, I had, uh, Mr. Hickers since you were with you, they put out for the quote, they give this is one quote from our current provider for insurance, the others, one could not read that quote, and, um, there were no other quotes. And so what we're asking, we've got a quote from Texas Kids First Loan Store Three. It's the same company that we're leasing this year. The quote is exactly the same, and the cost is exactly the same. My recommendation is that you approve Texas Kids First Loan Store Three as the student insurance provider for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
Your most, move the approval to nine of the media. Second.
Second.
Most of my last, the last, second by his, really, in fact, discussion, our question. All second. Stand by. So to see, consider JISB a practical calendar procedures for the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school.
Okay, so you've got, um, the appraisal calendar. Uh, we approve that every year in our main meeting. So this is when we are praising our teachers, uh, through our teacher's, um, process. And you've got the calendar, when the period, observation period begin, uh, when our summative evaluations are due to be completed and finished. Uh, and then you've also got the information in there about pre-conferences, post-conferences, end-of-the-year conferences. Um, and it just explains the procedures for that. My recommendation is that you approve the JISB appraisal calendar and procedures for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year as previously.
Your most. So. I want to. Second. Should I?
I'm sorry? Yes, sir?
He wants to say.
Now, your most in a second. Please, discuss our question. All clear? Stand by. So do you consider resolution of the board regarding hazardous traffic conditions?
Okay, so you, we talked about this also. This is, we're not required to provide transportation within two miles from school to home, but we do in our district. But we still, have we still identified those hazardous routes that would be hazardous within a two-mile, um, zone? Because if we didn't provide that transportation, uh, we could, for those if they're hazardous and identified as that. But we do get funding from the state for that. So, Ms. Brooks, um, identified those for you. We reviewed those in our workshop. Um, and what I'm asking you to do is approve this resolution so that we can get this to the state. So my recommendation is that you approve the resolution of the board regarding hazardous conditions.
Second.
My best, my second. Second. My question, please. Any further discussion, our question? All clear? So. So do you consider certain cases, two different cases of. Or cybersecurity training?
Okay, so this is to you. You are, we're required, and this is in the last, let's say, session on cybersecurity training. So all staff, um, any government, local government employees, required to receive cybersecurity training, including our school board. And so we also have to certify that they've been trained. And so, um, and it's, it either has to be by the know before or the DIR. We used to, we used to know before this year. Everyone has been trained. The information is there, um, for you, showing that, uh, it has been, um, uh, provided. And also that Ms. Ossberger is telling you that everyone has, um, been certified and trained through this training. So my recommendation is that you approve the certification for cyber, cybersecurity training for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year.
Your most. So move. Most of my last, your second. Second. Further discussion, our question? All clear? Stand by. Stand down. So we're actually asking you everything, the local cybersecurity and our procedures for administration of Pogal, Pogal.
Okay, so, um, you've got, uh, Mr. Hickers, he spoke to you about this policy. And, um, he went over about what this might do. This would be if, if there were students that were to, um, have an overdose, that this could be ejected. And so we are asking that you approve the policy which allows us to keep this on, um, campus and our police officers to keep this in their car. Our proper trainings have been already done, and we want to just get this in our policy to approve this. So my recommendation is that you approve the revisions to Joshua ISD level policy FFA.
Your most, second. Second, second. Please, let me further discussion, our question? All clear? Stand up. Consider resolution extended the voluntary contract funds on this school year under Texas education. Oh, 345, such as you think, school.
Okay, so this, Ms. Brooks shared with me. We can, in three years, we can do a two-year extension. And this is our last time to do that. So the two-year extension from this particular timeline. And so we are recommending that you approve an extension with First Financial Bank. And we've got the information there. We've already met with them. The only difference, like she said, is that they're moving the interest rate from 2% to 1.75%. Other than that, everything else is the same. My recommendation is that you approve the resolution to extend a two-year contractual contract with First Financial Bank.
That's 145.
Yes. Yes, guaranteed that we're going to get one for we're going to. Yes.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, or we get, yeah.
Go back with you.
Yeah, right. And then, yes. In the last two or three, I know I've been. This is, I've been 10-1.
Okay, Ms. Anderson, make some motion. Go here, second.
Second.
Second. The last one. Any further discussion, our question? All clear? Second, consider revision to compensation plan.
Okay, so Ms. Stambach visited with you about this in our workshop. You've got the copy of the compensation plan. Now, this is for this current year. Anytime there's anything, and she's gone through that and she's found some places where some positions weren't on the compensation plan. Some positions that, for example, you've got public cell. We're going to do some of those summer programs we've never done before. Disover substitutes were not on there. Dean of DAP on an admin pay grade three. This would be at the senior DAP. We would be changing that title there and moving that pay grade. A coordinator of student learning outcomes and federal special program to pay grade four. And then occupational therapist assistant on a clinical pay grade eight. You've had this before, but it's not in on the compensation plan. Disover substitute, public cell instructors to work this summer, public cell lead to work this summer. And then to remove that testing coordinator supplement at that high school level. So those are all of the revisions. And my recommendation is that you approve these provisions to our compensation.
I make a motion, we approve the provisions.
Motion by Mr. Brewett, second. Second. Well, present a third overtime, hurry, let's go forward.
We get fat.
Any further discussion, our question? All clear? Second, consider letter agreement. In ISD, we provide adult education, literacy program. I have spoken to.
You're thinking about that bonus pay.
I'll work it back by tonight, I won't give it to you. Consider revision to the policy, see the local compensation.
So this is, Ms. Stambach visited with you also in the workshop. It's this R that we're asking you to remove. It's a typo, but it misinterprets the meaning of the policy. So all we're doing is making a recommendation to move, to remove that R so that it reads as it should, where it's stating that anytime any employee reaches with their sick leave over 30 days and it's paid back, that no employee will go over 30 days of sickness. So my recommendation is that you approve the revision to policy to ECA.
My motion to approve subject, second. Second.
Motion by Mr. Wilson, second by Mr. Brewett. Any further discussion, question? All clear? Second. Second, consider letter agreement. In ISD, provide adult education and literacy program.
Okay, so this is, we approve this. Every three years, we have an agreement. So the state of Texas, TEA, I should say, there's a grant for providing adult education. And this grant is given to a certain school district within regions. And then that school district provides the adult education. But we go into an agreement with them that they can use our facilities. So if they come out and operate in our area, so they might use our community room, our lecture hall, the high school, maybe a library, one of our campuses to provide ESL classes for adults. Or maybe, it could be anything, any type of adult education. So we go into this agreement. Every three years, we approve this. So my recommendation is that you approve the letter of agreement with DIN ISD.
Your motion. Subtle. Motion by Mr. Lawson, second, any further discussion, our question? All clear? Stand up. Second, consider you can tell the United Coalition.
So, like was here in our workshop and we shared with him. The United Coalition reached out to him. They are providing internet services, not free services, internet services to their customers. And they are laying the fiber. And so they're asking for a easement. And this easement will go behind the stadium. It'll go along Henderson on the north side of the stadium and then behind the stadium on Henderson. And that's now. And what it will be is it will be, it'll go four feet deep. So we can put concrete or anything over that if we need to in that back lot. And it will be a 10-foot easement, but they'll be using three feet off of that and not mess up any of our trees or anything like that. And so my recommendation is that you approve that easement.
Your motion. Come on.
Too fast.
Any further discussion, our question? All clear? Second, consider resolution of the board regarding S3 and policy CBA local state federal.
Okay, so the state sent this out to, the TASB sent this out to the plan C. For the S3 fund, the school districts have been notified about the S3, which are part of those grants that we are receiving. And, but what they're asking us to do for auditing purposes because we have to present to the public that we're asking for comment on how to use that federal money. And we do that with all of our federal ones anyway. But we always do it in June at a public hearing that are board meetings where the loud is posted, people are notified of it. It's open to the public. People can ask or give suggestions. And so, but they want us to make sure that we put it in policy so that we're stating this is how we're going to do it for all federal firms and that we're going to be consistent. And so basically what this resolution is stating and it would go into CBA local policy that the district will provide public notice of federal grant applications through an information item at a board meeting, which would be on public hearing. And my policy publishes information on the district's website, which it would be published because we post our information. We post our minutes and then we would post that for public comment and shall make available opportunities for public input as required by law or the grading agency. So we're going to do surveys. And this, Ossberger's already worked with his knowledge and surveyed that to parents, staff, and high school students. And then the second bullet says that approval of required grant and award plans shall be made by, for example, this could be the board of the student community policy. But we'll always say that here's the board giving commission to approve those plans. And we do that when we put those to DEA. So my recommendation is that you approve this resolution. This will prove its compliance. This will cover what we do for auditing purposes. We've already do this for 20 years and will approve this. That public review, that public review will happen. So my recommendation is that you approve the revision to policy.
Your motion. Subtle. Motion by. Mr. Lawson. If you have a second.
I'll second.
Second. Any further discussion, our question? All clear? Consider change in the following.
So we always, I always bring to you, and we've got, we look through the calendar and it's like sometimes Thanksgiving, if it falls on the third Monday or Christmas break, if it falls on the third Monday, neither one of those fall on the third Monday this year. So we don't have to change those dates, but we do change the one around spring break. Doesn't fall on that Monday, but the week before that third Monday is spring break. So in order for planning, we always move that. So we're, I'm asking you to approve. So the state, right now, the third Monday is March 21st. I'm asking you to consider March 28th as the March day for March 2022 school board meetings. So my recommendation is that you approve March 28th for our March 2022 school board meeting day.
Your motion. Second. Presenting, any further discussion, our question? All clear? 551001. sex in fact, I have one zero zero one, here we try that one. One zero three.
Your favorite recommendation, please?
Yes, sir. I would like to recommend Michael Clayton as the LMS Assistant Principal for the 2021-2022 school year. Yay!
You're here, Moses.
I'll make a motion.
Motion on that candidate. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. I'm going to ask any questions or questions. You want my statement? You want to...
No words is that... Please don't.